All right, everyone. Thanks for waiting on us. I appreciate that a great deal. It is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, and we are here for the monthly voting meeting of the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission. And I'm going to ask Sarah George from the manager's office to call. Roll for us.
Davenport.
Here.
Link.
Here.
Taylor.
Right.
Present.
Fisher.
Here.
Johnson.
Culpepper.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
Hamby.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it. All right. We have some time-sensitive matters, so I have a couple of additions and a couple of things that are going to move on the agenda. So I'd ask that we be able to make these following modifications. First, we need to add as new item A1 immediately following this roll call vote, the approval of the appointment of Sarah George, sitting in front of me, as temporary acting deputy clerk of commission.
So move.
I'm going to go over the whole set of modifications.
We're all excited for it.
We need to move item 42 to right after the taxpayer bill of rights hearings, as we have to legally act on that matter before 7:00 P.M. We need to add a new item 42A, the approval of the nomination of the charter officers, which the county attorney and the internal auditor. And then finally, we need to make an amendment to item 43, which is already on the agenda, to add the appointment of the interim attorney. So could I have a motion for those modifications?
So move.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Fisher, all in favor of those agenda item modifications. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Because our first item of business is the approval of the appointment of Sarah George, we need a motion for suspension of rules. Do I hear such a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton and second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So I will now entertain a motion to appoint Sarah George to serve as a temporary acting deputy clerk of commission.
So move.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Wright, with second from Commissioner Thornton.
You had it twisted, but that's fine.
That's usually the way it is. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Sarah, you're official. We appreciate you fulfilling these duties.
No comment needed.
All right. Next item is approval of the minutes of meetings of Tuesday, May 6th, Tuesday, May 13th, Tuesday, May 20th, where there were two meetings, and non-voting meetings of Thursday, May 8th, Tuesday, May 13th, where there were two meetings, Tuesday, May 20th, and Thursday, May 22nd. There are motion for approval of those minutes. Or otherwise, is there motion for reconsideration of any item?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion to approve minutes. I have that from Commissioner Davenport. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I have a second from Commissioner Link. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Madam Clerk, are there any written communications?
There are none.
None. All right. I'll go ahead and read our civility pledge that we appreciate having been provided by Georgia Municipal Association of their annual meeting at the end of June in Savannah. I hope the commissioners can make it there. And that indicates that the way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take, that our collective decisions will be better when differing views have the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered, that all people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness, and that we value all input and commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other. All right. The first public input opportunity is going to mirror the others. This is going to be a three-minute opportunity for members of the public to speak to the taxpayer bill of rights. And so this is an opportunity for somebody to speak to the forthcoming fiscal year 26 budget. It will be a three-minute opportunity for each resident. You see a light in front of Acting Clerk George. It will turn green when you begin speaking, yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and red when your three minutes has concluded. And I'll thank you for your time here. Just as a calendar note, the second taxpayer bill of rights hearing will be two days from today, here in this room, Thursday, June 5th, at 6:00 P.M., where there will be a budget work session. And then the final taxpayer bill of rights hearings will be a week from tonight, Tuesday, June 10th, at 6:00 P.M., again, right here in this room, which is the day we are scheduled to approve the budget. So if you would like to speak to the budget, if you'll line up at the podium now, and so that way we can hear each of you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Did you say 42 needs to be voted by 7:00 o'clock?
That's right. So we may take a brief...
Did you want to do that first?
We may... Attorney Drake, I don't know if you have any recommendations regarding that?
Well, we need to... We had to approve the terms of what we've agreed to sell these bonds for by 7:00 o'clock. That's what our financial advisor said. So if you feel like it's necessary to go and do it now, you can make a motion to amend the agenda, go ahead and vote on it at this point.
Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner, to again amend the agenda?
Yeah, I would like to amend the agenda to move 42 up ahead of the public input so that we can get that business out of the way. But anyway, I would like to make the motion to move it up to now. Go ahead and vote on it.
And I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Davenport to take care of item 42 right now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And just so that we kind of follow through on public input opportunity, and apologize, ma'am, but is there any member of the public who would like to speak solely to item 42 at this point, which is our sale of bonds that will result in approximately $9 million of savings to the Public Utilities Fund? All right. Seeing none, I'll come to the body for a motion on item 42.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. On item 42. All right. We've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Davenport, and then Attorney Drake is going to read the ordinance.
To supplement the bond ordinance enacted by the Unified Governor of Athens Clark County, Georgia on April 1st, 2025, to provide further terms of the water and sewerage revenue refunding bond series 2025, to ratify the preparation, use, and distribution of preliminary official statement, and a financial official statement in connection with the offer and sale of bonds be issued and for other purposes.
All right. Thanks, Attorney Drake. Commissioner Wright, any remarks regarding this?
No, just taking care of business. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Davenport?
This is good for the taxpayer. We're going to save some money on bonds and pay back on the 2015 bonds.
Any other input? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, everybody. All right. We'll move now to the taxpayer bill of rights hearing. So if you'd like to speak to the budget, just line up right here.
So I am Lynn Gainas, and I'm with UGA Parents for Safety and Security in Safety Athens. And about the budget, we'd like to see the mayor and commission fully staff and fund ACCPD's real-time crime center and the FY26 proposed budget. This is also a formal presentation of a petition that we have sent to all of you, but we haven't received any formal responses. Almost 750 signatures, and some of you have inquired and asked some questions. We appreciate that. First, a personal message to all of you tonight from Lake and Riley's mom, Allison Phillips. I am Lake and Riley's mom. The safety of students at UGA should be the highest priority of the school and city of Athens. My daughter was brutally murdered on campus. She was not out partying. She was out for a run in broad daylight. Making Athens a sanctuary city is total negligence on the part of the city. Something must be done so that no other family has to endure the devastation we have to go through, unquote. Mayor Gertz, you promised. You promised her, and you promised all of us to fully staff and fund the real-time crime center, which we do not fully see in the FY26 proposed budget. Our working groups brought up RTCC and Block by Block Safety and Outreach Ambassadors December 15th, 2021, in a formal meeting with Mayor Gertz and the city manager at the time. The mention obviously predates Lake and's murder. In October 2021, in a mayor and commission meeting, Melissa Link works effectively with others to table important UGA-funded camera fiber, the foundation of security cameras. UGA responds with a scathing rebuke in writing that these decisions will pose risks to students and all in Athens. And unfortunately, that came to fruition many, many times before Lake and's assault and murder and after. It also took the mayor and commission too long to finally accept over $350,000 from UGA to begin adding more cameras to what will be part of RTCC, purposeful delays, and a tool not yet in place to protect Lake and and so many others. Lake and Riley was alone with Jose Ibera and tortured and killed for over 18 minutes, 18 minutes without a tool to interrupt and save her life. That's six of us up here talking and providing solutions to this body who have done nothing but stalled, denied, extort, and to lie. Extortion example, Commissioner Link's reason for denying 2021 camera fiber was not inclined to agree on anything for UGA until there is linen town redress, affordable housing, and a living wage. She's trading practical public safety that saves lives for ideology. Lies example, Mayor Gertz, you promised at Lake and's press conference to fully fund and staff RTCC. There was no mention of UGA expectations...
Thank you, Ms. Gainas. I appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you. Appreciate it.
...to fund by extra student fees or raising football ticket prices.
Ma'am, your time's up for the evening. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Your three minutes has expired.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Susan Monteverde. I'm with Safety Athens. Also, my green light's on, so I'm going to buzz. Here we go. When we learned about the RTCC not being fully funded as requested, we asked parents to send emails to all of you. I'm sure you've received some of those emails already. But I wanted to read a response that infuriated a parent from Mayor Gertz. Thanks for reaching out. We are glad for the initiation of the RTCC, which already has two crime analysts, not among its staff, and many be joined by another in the coming year. As with every new project, it will certainly evolve in the years ahead as new technology takes root and staff gain experience. We are similarly glad to have fully staffed each shift and stationed in our police department for the first time in over a decade, bringing two consecutive years. Complete blow off. He was not happy. But anyway, here's our response. The two existing ACCPD analysts have been in position for years, which deeply are dedicated and already carry full-time workloads. Mayor Gertz, do you really think the RTCC replaces existing workloads? Their current duties include investigating... I just lost it again. Include investigating support of detectives and special operations, tactical and strategic analysis for patrol and command staff, and community-facing analysis and reporting for transparency and engagement. These responsibilities are tasked regardless of the RTCC existence. The RTCC is not a standalone function. It is an added responsibility placed upon an already stretched crime analysis unit. The RTC requires real-time monitoring, rapid dissemination of intelligence, camera system integration, and coordination with field personnel, which is significantly different from traditional crime analysis work. To be effective, the RTCC must be staffed proactively, not reactively, and with personnel dedicated to its unique mission. Pulling analysts away from their existing roles will risk undermining both traditional analysis functions and the success of the RTCC. Moreover, Mayor Gertz, by not funding it, you're overstretching an existing overstretched department. If you want to sustain the recent gains in crime reduction, you must ensure that you are not just adequately staffing officers in the field, but also the analysis and support staff who provide the data and insights that guide those deployments. In short, the full staffing request for analysis and one supervisor was based on careful assessment of operational needs, national best practice, and the demand of a 24/7 center, and it was discussed with ACC government before requesting. Without appropriate staffing, you risk overburden current personnel, reducing effectiveness across the board, and underutilizing the investment already made in the million-dollar-plus vital public safety initiative called RTCC. And what I'd like to do right now is play your words.
First things we're going to be seeing rolling out for Dorson Clark Commission this Tuesday is advancing our real-time crime center. Which is the first step toward this real-time crime center in the last budget year, and we're going to be advancing this to completion, including making sure that we tie our accessible areas...
Thank you, Ms. Monteverde. I appreciate you coming this evening.
And there's private cameras that have engaged with us...
Thank you.
You're interrupting yourself.
That's right. Happens every day.
You said to staff every shift. You are not doing that, and you know it, and you blew up parents.
Thanks for coming this evening.
So please commit to what you committed to. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hey there. My name is Michael Chowey. I'm at 109 Mark Twain Circle. This is my first time doing this. I don't know what the decorum is, but I just wanted to say thanks to y'all for doing a pretty difficult and thankless job. So I'm here because I saw that Commissioner Myers suggested a draft budget that increased funds for the library, public defender's office, the tax commissioner, the police department, the fire department, the courts, the sheriff's office, the DA, the food bank, and the keep Athens Clark County beautiful, as well as additional funds for affordable housing. I grew up in poverty, and the library is kind of essential to people who are struggling, and they provide amazing services. And I'd like to advocate especially for doing what you can for the library and for affordable housing. I know that's a huge issue, and y'all are trying, but as much money as you can give it, I would appreciate it. Also, I don't know what the firefighter's asking for, but you should probably give it to them. They're firefighters.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming this evening. Good evening.
Hey. My name is Dariya Kalantari, and I live at 120 Winter Circle. And I just wanted to come up tonight and ask for the budget to support the racial equity resolution that was passed back in April, and that we consider Commissioner Myers' proposal for the mileage increase, if it is really just about $10, that we support that, and especially that it goes towards affordable housing. So Athens works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dariya. Good evening.
Good evening. This is Dylan Woolsey, 505 Verben Parkway, here to comment on the recent proposal by the commissioner from District 8. Definitely, from what I've seen of the couple budgets I've seen so far, the best so far, but we still need to do more. For example, in terms of funding our code enforcement, there have been note issues with certain buildings being public, as well as certain areas under private landlords not getting water, as well, making sure our capital budgets, in terms of items we need for facilities, are fully funded, which this definitely helps with as well, and including in terms of just making our community lot nicer, better place to live, making sure our food bank and environment are being supported, as well, the million-dollar investment to the Affordable Housing Fund, which was outlined as the main way to increase affordable housing as recommended by the Affordable Housing Investment Strategy that, as the commission was adopted, will definitely help the... And I'm just going to list how many non-homeowners this will help in terms of either not increasing the rent as much, decreasing the rent, or possibly becoming home buyers in each neighborhood. This is from... This data is from the Census and the Neighborhood Leaders website, so has really great information. In Alps Neighborhood, 2,517. In the Barnett Schultz Neighborhood, 3,900. In the Barrow Neighborhood, 6,400. In the Chase Neighborhood, 2,200. In the Cleveland Road Neighborhood, 1,300. In the Fowler Neighborhood, 979. In the Gaines Neighborhood, 2,410. In the Howard v. Stroud Neighborhood, 2,700. In the Julia Jackson Harris Neighborhood, 481. In the Maxine Pinsum Esum Neighborhood, 2,352. In the Oglethorpe Neighborhood, 1,100. In the Paye Neighborhood, 800. And then Timothy Road Neighborhood, 2,800. In the Wedd Davis Neighborhood, 941. Whitehead Road Neighborhood, 905. And the Winchville Neighborhood, 1,100. All these people are currently non-homeowners, and any investment into affordable housing will definitely help in terms of making sure that they're not rent burdened, making sure that they're able to make further down payments on a house, making sure that if they live in affordable housing, that they can maintain to remain in their current affordable housing, and also if it's currently blighted or having damage, that they can apply for repairs as well. All these will be helped with any more affordable housing investment. So I urge you to currently support the best budget that has been proposed so far, which is the budget from the commissioner from District 8. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Good evening.
Hey. I'm Lexi Doherty. I live at 185 Providence Road. I did not time this, so hopefully I will get through it. I'll try to be fast. I am here to support Carol Meyer's working budget, specifically investing in the Affordable Housing Fund. So I'll start with the basics. When we discuss human needs, the list usually goes oxygen, food, water, shelter. So I personally feel that we have responsibility to ensure that every member of our community has access to those resources that they need to literally survive. The cost of housing is obviously a huge issue, and there isn't going to be a single strategy that fixes the problem. Took us a long time to get here, and frankly, it's going to take us a long time to get out. And that's why I think we, as a community, have a responsibility to take the issue seriously and work diligently on solutions. The commission passed an Affordable Housing Investment Strategy. The strategy recommends an investment fund with yearly investments from the county budget. The $1 million proposed by Carol's budget is less than the recommended yearly investment. I think this investment is the bare minimum that we should be adding to this investment fund every year. I don't think we should be relying on a few dollars here and there from a patchwork of projects to fund the Affordable Housing Fund in Athens. I think we should put our money where our mouth is and commit to a yearly investment in the Affordable Housing Fund. Please work with Carol Myers on her draft budget and ensure that the final budget has the inclusion of funding for the Affordable Housing Fund. Thank you, commissioners. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Mocha Jasmin Johnson, PO Box, Athens, Georgia, 30604. First, I want to say thank y'all for all those budget meetings, because this budget thing is heavy to understand and to digest, and I noticed that you guys had several meetings, and I had to go back and try to review it. But I just had a few questions. I wanted to know, you had 47% of the budget is going towards public safety, but I didn't see any of it carved out for PCOP, for Public Civilian Oversight Board. Yet I have heard commissioners try to point fingers at community members for the failure of PCOP, and if it's not funded, PCOP will absolutely fail. Also, I had a question about, to all the commissioners, is, okay, this budget has been proposed, but do you believe that it will adequately address the housing crisis that we have? I noticed that Houston Gaines, which is one of our representatives, is online, talking down on Athens for the housing issues and crisis that we have here, but no one is proposing solutions. So I'm hoping that this budget that's being proposed is going to address that. And I also wanted to find out about, are youth safety, is this budget going to adequately address the issues that we're having around our youth? And those are the only questions that I have, but I do thank you for having all of those meetings for the transparency, and continue to do what y'all do.
Thank you, Mocha. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Garing. I live at 140 Griffith Street. I'm here to speak on the budget. I would like to speak in support of Commissioner Myers' working budget. I'm here to speak in favor of it because it adds funding for such important things as our library, our public defenders, and of most interest to me, significant investment in our Affordable Housing Fund. The mayor's proposed budget already set aside some money for that, but as I'm sure everyone on this body understands, there's more need for funding in this realm than we could possibly get done in one year, so we have to keep at it every single year. There's more need for affordable housing, for funding for affordable housing, especially in the current federal political climate, than is addressed through any in lieu of fees that we're getting from the whatever's happening with the foundry building. And all of this is at, for me, it'd be less than $10, about $10 per person. So I'm just here to say, take my $10. I want more money in that Affordable Housing Fund. I know that we're still working on the plan for it, but we have an Affordable Housing Investment Strategy. And as that plan builds, whenever it is ready to get put into action, the more money we have ready to go then, the more we can do as soon as that plan is ready. In addition to supporting Commissioner Myers' working budget, I would like to express my disapproval that the mayor's proposed budget did not meet the requests from Public Transportation Public Works to fund, put funding into their pedestrian safety and traffic calming capital fund. This is another thing where, you know, we'll have TSPLOST money. I was on the last TSPLOST advisory commission. We turned down more than half of the proposed projects. There was so much work there that doesn't get funded through TSPLOST. 71 people have died on our roads since 2021. If you are worried about public safety, we have to make our roads safer as well. And we can't do that without fixing some stuff up. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Would anyone else like to speak to our taxpayer bill of rights hearing on the FY26 budget? Good evening.
Good evening. Michael McClendon, Princeton Mill. The mayor's budget just continues a pattern of fiscal irresponsibility that has now become a staple in Athens Clark County. You're running on fumes. You continue to draw down the reserves that we have while debt is continuing to increase. On the May 28th, I sent each of you an email with an attachment that identifies $12.23 million worth of cuts that you can make in this budget to free up dollars that can be allocated to high-priority critical needs. It's sad to say that only two of the commissioners here actually opened their email to read what I sent you. I think that's a sad commentary, because one of the issues that you face is that you're not fully funding core requirements for infrastructure. You only gave $2 million against $14 million for roads. You didn't fully fund the real-time crime center. You have not fully funded the sheriff's office. And by the way, citizens need to know that pretty soon Channel 11 is going to be alive at the sheriff's office, because their whole information system and control system for the jail and all the security cameras is going to fail, because it's operating on Windows 11, which is not supportable and has got lots of cyber flaws to it. You didn't fully fund that requirement either, and I could go on and on. So what I'd suggest is, you need to really go look at this. There's a lot of fat in Athens Clark County budget that has nothing to do with meeting core requirements whatsoever. So I encourage you to do that. The second quick thing I would say is that you're about to go hire a new city manager. I hope he understands the fiscal situation that you have allowed to occur on his watch. And by the way, the public needs to know that it took an open records request by me to find out even what the status of the search is for the city manager. Why is that? The city manager has roles and responsibilities of power that impact every citizen in Athens Clark County. Citizens need to know what you're doing relative to this search. They need to understand who these finalists are. They need to understand the criteria for evaluation, and they deserve the opportunity to question these individuals in public. Thank you.
Thanks for coming this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Smith. For 20 years, I've been coming here and having, listening to public safety advocates come and blast our nonprofit work, blast everything we do. So I have a few questions for them, okay? Is there a police department budget? Have y'all worked with the police department to shift some of those funds from their own line items into the real crime time center? Okay? Is there UGA? Do they have funds? And they may be contributing to this. I do not know. Okay? So what about grants? Is there grants? Are they writing grants? Or are they going to just come blast the way Athens Clark County cares about people? That's what I want to know. I also want to know, do you think that a problem with hiring the right number of police officers, first responders, sheriff departments, have something to do with our cost of living here in Athens? Or do you think that we, they can just come up here and focus on narrow issues and actually endanger the safety of our community when we have peaceful protest with their antics and their actions? So I'm all good with it. I would work with them. I would go to the police department and find out if they have $125,000, and I would go to UGA, and I would help them find grants. But we are all terribly saddened. But to put our community at risk at police protests and then come, at peaceful protests, and then come in here and blast our nonprofits, and by the way, on the Neighborhood Leaders' leaders' data, the way data is done now that you need human narratives, you need real people on the ground to, to get that content from our community and pass it on. So please double the money for our nonprofits. Match half of the money they need for the real crime center and have them go out and get the rest. Okay? That's what we should do. And then, I only have a few more seconds. I've heard this for twenty years. I've never heard them come and advocate for better healthcare benefits for police respond, for first responders. I've never heard them do anything but narrowly focus and then, when I'm at protests, they are literally putting our community at risk. So I wish they would stop it. I have more comments, but I'll cover that in the next session. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming this evening. Anyone else here to speak to the fiscal year 26 budget before we move forward? All right. Next item tonight is to move to the consent agenda. Before we take public input, would any member of the commission like to remove any item from the consent agenda, which are items one through nineteen? All right, so now is that time for the public to speak to items one through nineteen, which are consent agenda items, which will be taken up in one vote here.
I got two things. Items eleven and twelve, which are the TAD Advisory Committee recommendations, those agenda, it says approve, but those agenda items indicate that the commission will be accepting those reports.
All right, so please note that twelve, eleven and twelve.
Which is what we normally do with those kind of reports. And then, you know, Mr. Mayor, that I asked that we be able to hold agenda item number seventeen, which is the Capitol Projects Department lease, to allow the attorney's office time to review the lease. We didn't get that reviewed before tonight's meeting. Hold it till next meeting.
Seventeen would be held. Anything removed? Number three is.
Number three, please.
Will be moved to discussion. Anything else? All right, members of the public, now it's time to speak to items one through nineteen,
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda, which are items one through nineteen, accepting three and seventeen. Seventeen would be held to June 10th. Three will move to discussion.
Any ordinance readings?
There will be, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hanby. We got a second from Commissioner Thornton. All right, and Attorney Drake will read the ordinances for us.
Ordinance is for items one, two, four, and five. Item one, an ordinance to amend the FY 2025 annual operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded to the Sustainability Department for U.S. Department of Energy through the Energy Efficient Conservation Block Grant Compliance Assist Initiative for Low and Modern Income Homeowner Energy Efficient Enhancement and for other purposes. Number two, an ordinance to amend the FY 2025 operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding to the Central Services Department for College Avenue parking deck repairs and for other purposes. Item number three, which is, that has been moved to the red region, I'll skip that one. Item number four, an ordinance to amend the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax 2020 Program Budget so as to provide additional funding to the East Side Library Project Number Twenty-Five for Energy Efficiency Installments and for other purposes. Item number five, an ordinance to amend the FY 2025 operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the Georgia Transit Trust Fund through the Georgia Department of Transportation for Transit Projects to add one full-time position to Transit Department to support financial procurement and compliance needs and for other purposes.
All right, appreciate you reading the ordinances. All right, so the vote will be to approve one through nineteen, accepting three, which is going to move to discussion, and seventeen, which will be held to June 10th.
I had a comment. Is it too late?
Yeah, so if you want to comment on something, you got to move it to discussion.
Well, I just want, okay, I just want us.
Or you can do it in the summary at the end of the evening.
I can do that. I can do that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we move on now to public hearing and deliberation regarding recommendations from the Athens-Clark County Planning Commission. Is there anybody signed up for the ten minutes? Sarah? All right, nobody signed up for the ten minutes. So for each of these planning and zoning items, twenty through twenty-five, there's a three-minute opportunity, as you heard discussed earlier. We're starting with item twenty. Would any members of public like to speak to item number twenty, which is 581 South Harris Anyone like to speak to item number twenty?
I make a motion to approve, Mayor.
All right, I've got a motion to approve from Commissioner Hanby. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Hanby, any discussion?
No, we had a good discussion at the agenda setting about this and understand the rationale behind it and the reason behind it, and hopefully, hopefully, something good will come out of, out of this down the line, but in the meantime.
I don't think your mic's working. Mike.
I think they do that on purpose.
There you go. You don't have to repeat yourself. I just want to let you know.
I'm just over here mumbling.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Wright?
No, it's an interesting situation, but I agree it needs to move ahead.
Anything else before I have Attorney Drake read the ordinance? Attorney Drake, ordinance for move number twenty.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County with respect to special use approval in the CG Commercial General District for one parcel of land located at 581 South Harris Street and for other purposes.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hanby, second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, is there any member of the public who is interested in speaking to item twenty-one, which is 610, 720, 730, and 760 Newton Bridge? Good evening.
Good evening. Jerry Wood, 330 Millet Heights. I'm the petitioner here for this and just want to thank the Planning Department for working with us on this, and thank y'all all for being here. Just wanted to speak in regards to the, to the approval with conditions. We are good with the conditions. Our intent here is to do affordable, single-family, fee simple, attached and detached housing. They, we, there's been a proposal for roundabout there at, at the intersection leading over to Holland Park, and we feel like that'll help traffic flow in that area as well as create a good entrance to, to the development. And then, as far as the connecting multi-use trails, we feel that's an asset to the community and to the development, leading to, over to Holland Park and to the Greenway Trail, and then also along Newton Bridge Road. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Yep.
Is there anybody else here to speak to item number twenty-one, Newton Bridge?
Hi, my name is Jared York. Live on Woodlawn Avenue in Athens, Georgia. Have a mixed-use development around the corner from this development on Fritz Mar. Also own some property on Cathwood, right around the corner from this. I'd also like to disclose that I have a business relationship with the applicant, and anything that would be built here on this property would probably be competition in my business, so I'm going to stay neutral on this and ask that nobody votes negatively based on anything I, I say tonight about this. There's a lot of things I like about this. The roundabout, for one. When I turn on Fritz Mar Lane, I almost get rear-ended by a car going sixty miles an hour every time. The, I like that there's a condition of fee simple on this. We certainly need housing, especially for sale housing. There's some, there's some nice things about this, like the multi-use path. My confusion comes from our overall strategy on housing as a community, and this project has some unknowns, like for sale, or for rent, or rent-to-own. There's no binding architecture. The location of this isn't comparable to some of the locations that you guys have denied, some projects that are walking distance to schools. When people live out here and they go to the doctor, they go to work, they order DoorDash, somebody's getting on a loop. Somebody's going through some of these intersections that we're having problems with. Again, we need housing. I'm not, not against this project at all. I'm just a little bit confused about what you guys are approving versus what you're not approving, who you're speaking with, who you're not speaking with, and how you're parsing some of this information. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. York. Is there anyone else here to speak to the Newton Bridge Road proposal discussed in item Come to the commission for a motion. Commissioner Thornton?
I am prepared to deny both the motions, but I do want to, and I wanted to actually have time to talk to Mr. Jerry before I did that, but I was told that, Brad, can, can I hold this until the 10th? You said I couldn't hold it until.
You could hold it until, until the 10th.
You could hold it until the 10th, yeah.
I'm going to hold this until the 10th to meet with Mr. Jerry. Otherwise, I would be denying this and give you the option to reapply, but if we can meet before the 10th, by the 10th, I will be better prepared. I think that might be better than me denying it to that.
There's a motion to hold until June 10th. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Fisher. All right, go ahead and read the ordinance, if you would, please.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's a future land use map amendment as well as rezoning, and we confirmed, looking, we need to vote on both of these, actually, to hold both of them. So I'm going to read the future land use map first. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, in respect to amend the future land use map of Athens-Clark County by changing the designation of approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-five acres of land located at 610, 720, 730, and 760 Newton Road, Bridge Road from employment center and rural to mixed-density residential and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. And do you want to discuss the zoning item, and then I'll do two votes.
Okay, you may, I'll read it. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, in respect to rezoning four parcels of land comprising approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-five acres located at 610, 720, 730, and 76, and 760 Newton Bridge Road from I Industrial to RM1 mixed-density residential and for other purposes.
All right, so there's a motion to hold the future land use, which is the first vote we'll take, from Commissioner Thornton, so that she can have more time to speak to the applicant, and seconded from Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Thornton, anything else you want to provide?
No.
Commissioner Fisher, anything else from members of the body? All right, motion to hold future land use till June 10th, week from tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. All right, if you just make a motion to hold the zoning as well, Commissioner Thornton?
Yes.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, a second from Commissioner Fisher to hold the zoning until June 10th as well. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we will see you this next Tuesday. All right, moving on in our agenda to item twenty-two, and this is 284 Bailey Street. Is any member of the public here to speak to 284 Bailey Street? Item twenty-two, 284 Bailey Street.
Yes, sir. My name's Ross Watson. I live at 430 Central Drive, Cedar Creek. Is it okay if I talk about both twenty-two and twenty-three, since they both have to do with commercial, short-term rental? Okay, I give, you should have documents that have been handed over to you, passed out by Sarah. I really appreciate it. Number twenty-two is a completed construction project. Number twenty-three is under construction. Both of them are asking for commercial, short-term rental. The staff has recommended denial. They are one-hundred percent on target on their recommendation. They've done an excellent job of evaluating everything, and it is not the proper thing to do in either one of these subdivisions. I ask you to vote a denial and support their recommendation. They've done an excellent job. These developers want to convert a two-bedroom apartment or standalone unit to a CTSR, and they're guaranteeing there would be a maximum, get this, a maximum of six people in this two-bedroom. You have two beds, two bedrooms, and there's going to be a sofa with a pull-out bed supposedly. Six individuals moving into a community daily, in and out, twenty-four hours, three days, short-term rental. That's not conducive to a neighborhood. That is not comfortable for the people that are paying the rent there and the lease to have that type of traffic and that number of different individuals coming in. Once again, please deny it, please support the staff. If you look on the back of, of the sheets I gave you, you know, section E, H, and K, STRs are, you know, to enhance those people wishing to move into Clark County. We don't want community, I mean, CST, commercial STRs. We don't, who would want to move into our community when they know that the local government is, is going to approve an STR in their neighborhood? That doesn't make sense. And section H of the ordinances, rationally address quality of life. Every time you come home, you're, and your person that you're living with there is asking you, guess who moved in tonight? Guess what this weekend's going to be like?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I appreciate it. Three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Geritz, commissioners. My name is Alex Akins, 462 Whitehead Road, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys again tonight regarding my special use permit request for Bailey Quarters and Parkside Cottages. So I'd like to spend my time addressing the Planning Department's concerns, and some of the gentleman's concerns that was just up here. These concerns were discussed at length with the Planning Commission and the Planning Director during my meeting with them on May 1st, resulting in a unanimous vote of approval. Below is my response to the Planning Department's concerns. So on the housing stock impact, there is still a lot of inventory on the market. As of late April, Athens had eight-hundred-and-one available two-bedroom units pre-leased for fall '25. Seventy-seven-point-two percent is the percentage you can associate with that. That's ninety percent, just to give you a reference point, is considered good by market standards. However, the units at Bailey Quarters and Parkside Cottages are not affordable housing. I know that's been something that's been discussed tonight. The AHIS identifies the housing crisis as affecting those earning under thirty-five-thousand dollars, which these market-rate units require income of seventy thousand to eighty-eight thousand to be considered affordable, more than double the range noted by the AHIS report. That's according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Even if there is a lack of available options, which there isn't, these units are not defined as affordable housing. Onto quality of life concerns. We've hosted hundreds of groups. I'm a local Athenian, I want you to know that. We've hosted traveling nurses, construction crews, families visiting Athens, essentially groups who just need a place to sleep while they're in town, not the disruptive type. We are actively hosting a construction team right now who is working on a local project. They leave for work in the morning, they come back to sleep in the evening without disrupting anyone. We've never had any negative response from any community members. However, we are very considerate of our, the neighbors by providing our cell phone numbers to them if they should need to call us. All right. On the RM Zones residential intent, the zoning ordinance explicitly allows one short-term rental per parcel through the special use permit. So only one unit within these large student housing developments can operate as a short-term rental. Our request involves just one unit in each of these complexes, student housing complexes more specifically, as regulation allows. According to Laura Grindey, a property manager at College Town Properties, quote, "Of the past and current leased units, approximately eighty-five percent go to students. And if Meredith and I, my wife, do not lease them, they will likely remain vacant." My main argument is this. Meredith and I carefully reviewed the AHIS report, college house data, and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development affordability guidelines. If we believe this request was taking housing from families in need, we will withdraw our permit immediately. But the data is clear, this is a request with no meaningful impact on Athens' long-term affordable housing supply. We are following the process established by this body. We're not asking for an exception, we're asking for fair consideration within the framework this body has already set in place.
Thank you, Mr. Akins.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're discussing item twenty-two. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll apologize in advance, I ran up the steps to try and make the last one, and I missed it, so I will be breathy. However, my name is Al Lewis, and I'm here to talk about that item and some of what was just said. I would ask you guys to vote no. no in complete opposition to this program. You guys previously limited short-term rentals based on their impact on the housing market, which was the correct thing to do. I also want to point out that this person said they made it clear that their units are not affordable housing. They chose to make them unaffordable housing, and now this short-term proposal is not about providing housing options. It's about making more money. As they said, Athens does not have a shortage of housing. We have a shortage of affordable housing, but they are not proposing to make housing affordable. They are trying to exploit people who would not be able to afford a full lease. A lot of these short-term rentals, including the short-term hotels that we have in this area, charge people what looks like a smaller rate, but it is death by a thousand cuts. People are paying $800 for these short-term leases because they cannot afford a $1,000 apartment, but the pay by day is exorbitant. He is proposing to add to that problem. He has stated himself that he is not doing affordable housing. So, I would just like you to continue to do the right thing. This, no matter what they think the impact will be, the data shows that when short-term rentals are added to the market, they are more exploitative than the situation we have before. They don't help. They hurt. So, I thank you for continuing to uphold the name.
Thank you, Al. Is there anyone else here to speak to item number 22?
So, this is an interesting issue, and there's a bunch of confusion over the S T R situation. I think there's 1,400 that have been identified. So, there's good S T R hosts. There's local S T R hosts that are good. There's local investors who state their name in the application and who do not deceive the county in the application process. And there's hundreds and hundreds that exploit every rule every time for their own financial gain. It's sad because everybody knows S T R hosts that have been doing it for many years. They employ local contractors, local handymen, local cleaners, and they do their very best. We do have serious work to do on the S T R, S T Rs. I promise you, this family applying for this special use permit is part of the solution. They're not part of the problem. That's what I have to say about it. I hope y'all consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else here to speak to item number 22 on Bailey Street? All right, I'm going to turn to Commissioner Myers for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this, but get one second.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. And then I'd like to, obviously, I'd like to speak to that, and I'm not sure where my colleagues are on this, but I really want to explain this. I've spent a lot of time thinking about the S T Rs. We need to address a lot of issues with the, with S T Rs overall. That's clear. In this particular case, these are the short-term rentals in multifamily complexes, and that is actually, there's a, there's a request in the commission to find option from Commissioner Hamby, a few items down with the text amendment, to do just that. And I'm going to address some of the issues here, but as I've been thinking about the commercial S T Rs and the home occupation S T Rs, the ones that we all think of as where people, you know, people live in the house and they rent them out on the weekend versus the commercial ones where the people don't live in the mall, just to clarify this for everyone. We passed regulations a year ago because we didn't have any regulations, and we spent a lot of time setting up regulations. And we put in there that we are, you can apply for an S T R in a, in a multifamily apartment complex for a special use permit. I'm not sure, and perhaps my colleagues will, will, you know, argue otherwise, that there's be any, it either seems to me that we, if we don't want them in there, we need to change the ordinance completely and take out that as a special use permit. Right now, in apartment complexes, as the applicant has said, there's only one allowed per, per complex. And so, I guess we've spent so much time addressing in here in the last couple of years, all of the people who have started S T R businesses, kind of knowing that, you know, there was a little loophole because we hadn't caught up with that. We didn't have any rules and regulations. So, now we have an applicant who is following our rules and regulations that perhaps need to be changed and revised, but he is following them. And for that reason, the logic I'm using is that I'm going to, you know, I'm making a motion to approve that. I ultimately think that we should go back and look at some of the questions about whether to further define where approvals or how many would be appropriate, what percentage, and that, that isn't going to be the case with our ordinance like we have right now because only one is allowed per apartment dwelling RM. But with the text amendment we're making with condos, you could have apartment of, building of condos, and they all could be converted into S T Rs under our present regulations. So, I think we need to go back to that. I would even be for putting a, like, pause, but that's, it doesn't have to do with this thing, on some of the approval of, as, commercial S T Rs in RMs until we clarify this. But right now, we're dealing with the regulations we put in last year. I've listened to this, thought about it carefully, and I'm, you know, I would, I'm for approving this as we are right now.
Got the Commissioner Link, and then Hamby and Davenport.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Myers on this one in particular, the same logic. I mean, we developed an S T R ordinance that allows these by special use in RM neighborhoods, and I would rather see an S T R in an RM, an intendedly RM neighborhood. This is a fairly new neighborhood that was intentionally built mostly for student housing. I guess, Brad or Bruce, maybe you can answer my question. This, we didn't have to rezone this property at all. It had long been RM, correct? When, I don't recall ever going through a rezone on, on this property off Bailey Street. It was never a single-family or...
I know, I know this was previously the recreation area for the Montessori School, and it was shared with the Y W C O.
This one is a Bailey Street.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is the Bailey Street one, yeah.
I'm sorry. No, you did not.
Okay, yeah, this is, I had always long been zoned RM.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my, my reasoning here. This is a, a long-term RM zone property. I do believe we need to revisit the S T R because of that condo loophole that's going on in there. You know, we do have a hotel room, shortage of hotel rooms in a community that is increasingly a resort community with the kind of tourism market we have. I'd rather see these things go into those kind of intentional RM kind of student housing-based communities than, and, and pull them further away from our existing neighborhoods that were, for some reason, 25 years ago, zoned RM when they're effectively single-family neighborhoods, so.
Commissioner Hamby?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a substitute motion to deny.
Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I had myself on my push the mute button. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a substitute motion to deny.
All right, got a motion, substitute motion to deny, and I heard a second from Commissioner Davenport, and go ahead.
No, I agree with staff recommendation on this.
Yeah, and I'm going to, in my allotted three-minute time, I'll read what, first of all, we have a, regardless of the cost of the housing, you know, whether a hundred thousand, whether a 20,000, there's a shortage, period. There are, I had three professors last year who came from other universities, who moved to District One, who were like, well, I'd rather live in town because, you know, I want to be closer to University of Georgia, and they were like, well, we moved to the east side because the housing stock is a lot cheaper. The number one thing that each of one of those university professors, even some are now tenured, stated was, most of the gate homes are now S T R, period. We sit here and talk about we need affordable housing. Regardless of affordability, we just need housing, period, because I do believe in market design, how, you know, the more housing we build, the cheaper the, the available market becomes cheaper. But the, we can't, we created this, this program, and this, this new ordinance to slow the growth of S T Rs. We can't in one vein say we need housing, then give up affordable, then give up housing that's available to these S T Rs. Like, and I, and I love when people say they're Athenians. My family's been here since the 1700s. That's an Athenian, not 12 years. But I do want to just really quickly read what staff analysis, and they're on point when they said this. Every unit that is permitted as a, a commercial short-term unit, that is unlikely to be available to long-term residents. Typically, special use requests are analyzed on an individual basis and proposed, and the proposal is judged on its unique qualities and location context. The one-offs may not create a problem in the context of specific requests, but collectively, the short-term rental, commercial short-term rental will remove housing from the market in a substantial way. While the special use does not remove the possibility of long-term rental occupancy, the relative increase in revenue generated from S T R leaves staff to the conclusion that, in practice, these units would not be, would not use for any occupancy other than S T Rs. And if you read that paragraph, the one thing that got me was, blah, blah, blah. I should have brought my highlighter, but, yeah. So, it, it just, we have to be intentional when it comes to housing. I'm not against the applicant trying to make money off of the short-term rental, but we really need housing, and this neighborhood is just not college student. There are some working-class families who are there as well, and I'll be denied on the next agenda item as well.
Anyone else before I return to Commissioner Myers? Commissioner Myers?
Hold this. Commissioner Taylor?
This is the second time you don't ignore me. I was not going to say nothing the first time, but don't do that.
Hello, Jazz.
You know, I take it kind of personal.
Thanks for noting, Commissioner Taylor. Go ahead.
And just so, just so we're mindful, Bailey Street has Pinewood apartments there. It's an affordable housing complex that consists of low to moderate families, predominantly black. And so, you know, before we say, well, this is a new area, and, you know, no one was lived, it was predominantly black, and a lot of those families have been going through with, with owners changing in the complex. They, they went through some pretty rough things, and I'm not against the applicant either. I just, I just feel like we also have to be responsible where, you know, we allow S T Rs, because they bring parties, and we don't, we don't want another murder or shooting at a short-term rental, and that can happen all over Athens. But it's more or so less when it's in a predominantly black area. I know a lot of people probably think that I'm crazy, but I live in reality, and I know that area fairly well. And I know when things do or don't mix, even though it looks good on paper. And so, I think that we have to be mindful as well. Just because it looks good on paper doesn't mean that it'll pan out in reality.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, my, my only, I'm not actually going to argue to deny or, or, or accept this at this point. What I want to say is that I think we just really need to reflect on whether we're going to allow commercial S T Rs in RM neighborhoods at all, because a lot of the arguments that I'm hearing are against them. And I might, you know, it'd be a lot easier if we didn't have any S T Rs. They all just disappeared because there's a lot of new regulations with them. But, so, I guess, I, I just want to, you know, we, we have that checked off, that we allow them in there, and we probably need more guidance to applicants as well. I think I did pull up something from the planning department coming in next month that had some more of these. And so, I think we just need to reflect on a little bit more carefully about how we are allowing them, because we do have, I mean, we do have 1,400 S T Rs, and many of them are non-conforming S T Rs. So, just a reminder again, we're spending a lot of time on the non-conforming ones. We're making regulations about ones that we are allowing, assuming we want them, and I just want us to make some regulations that make sense and that people can follow. So, as a next step, let's just go into that and do that if this is denied.
Commissioner Thornton?
I'm, I'm glad that we're at this point because we have made, most of the time, you don't even know it's a problem until the problem becomes public. And I'm sure when we discussed this, we didn't know these loopholes. But I don't think it's right to move forward when we know that there's loopholes, and I'm not going to be supporting this either 22 or 23.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Thor.
I'd like to ask you, Brad. So, you guys denied this application.
They had a recommendation to deny.
Recommendation. So, my question is, are we, whatever's on the books, does the book say that by right, we want to do a short-term rental, a multifamily unit, we could, an applicant could do that? Is that, is that, you understand my question?
I think I do. On the books, as the ordinance is worded today, could, could a short-term rental operate at this location?
Yes.
And it could as a home occupation, and that would be administered by staff. It wouldn't require a vote by this body. What's different is when a short-term rental is going to be functioned as a commercial entity, meaning the resident who's operating the short-term rental doesn't live at that address, then they have to ask for special use approval to be able to function that way. Does that...
Yeah.
Okay.
Give me clarity.
All right. Everybody understand the substitute motion is on the floor, so I'm going to have Attorney Drake read the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, in respect to special use approval in the RM dash one mixed density residential district for one parcel of land located 284 Bailey Street, Unit 410, and for other purposes.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to deny special use for this property. We're going to do a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Hamby as the motioner.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
I am, I need to abstain as well as the next two items as well.
Okay.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
Yes.
We have seven yes, two no, one abstention.
All right, motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to item number 23, and again, there's an opportunity for public input on item 23, so if any member of the public who's here with us this evening would like to speak to it, now is that time.
Yeah, so, obviously, I'm disappointed with, with how this body has ruled on this process. I would like to challenge Commissioner Hamby to, and the commissioners who voted no, if I am here presenting data, and I'm presenting numbers to you guys, I would like to understand what I am missing here. I, I respect this body's decision. We will, we will find an alternative for these two properties. And I'd also like to encourage Commissioner Davenport, I am an Athenian. I maybe wasn't born here. That wasn't my decision, but I love this town, and I share the qualities of it. And so, I would just recommend caution whenever you are pushing others away from what an Athenian is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to item 23? Good evening.
Good evening. Al Lewis, again. I just want to point out that this was a brand-new building, so they knew that they had intentions to change the zoning before they built it, and they did not present that to the planning committee before they did this. So, I would just like to point that out, that the decision to deny was the right one, and if the developer knew that they wanted to do a commercial residential situation, they had ample time to present that to the planning committee. This was a single-family home that has been turned into a multi-luxury student cottage housing that... that, again, adds a lot of new units, but does not, uh, help anyone in the area as they are far more expensive than the apartments that they are actually next to. So just want to point that out.
Thank you, Ms. Louis. Is there anyone else here to speak to item twenty-three, uh, which is regarding fifteen eighty Barnet Scholz Road? Good evening.
That's Ross Watson, four three zero Sandstone Drive. Number twenty-three is also information, uh, pretty much what I said regarding twenty-two applies to twenty-three. However, if for any chance you would approve this, I would make the following conditions part of your vote. Notify all pre-lease holders and have the agencies, the developer, identify the unit to be commercial, short-term rental, and where it's located in relation to the other units. Number two, that should be sent out certified or registered mail. All pre-lease contracts should be refundable with no dollar penalties if there are pre-lease contracts that, um, that have been negotiated and these people need to be aware of the change in the zoning, and they shouldn't be penalized for it. And then, of course, we would expect that the, uh, future contracts that come out by the developer, whoever's handling it, that they, uh, let be known in the contract that the people are signing for the lease that there is an STR facility located within the complex. It is the maximum occupancy of six people for a two-bedroom unit. And what is the number of parking spaces these six people are going to get relative to other people in two-bedroom condos? I respectfully request that you vote denial on this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Is there anyone else here to speak to item twenty-three before we come to commission discussion?
Hi, my name is Chase Lawrence. I live at one hundred Cliver Circle here in Athens. And I'm the owner of this property and the property management company. And my apologies that I failed to appear on the previous, I was listening to it from a camp pickup and I almost ran here, I'm so out of breath. So, um, a little bit of misinformation conveyed behind the rail tonight that I just want to clear up for this vote. We do not have a surplus of one- and two-bedroom units on the rental market on the east side. There are twenty-five available one-bedrooms at this location as of today that must be filled by August. We will not fill up. There were eleven at the prior location that you voted on. There are nine at the community next door that will not fill up. We actually are reducing our prices right now, and there's a glut of that unit type on the market. We also do not have any young families living at that location, as previously stated, not one on our rent roll. I don't know where that came from. So when we look at this, let's look at it in the context of this particular decision, not the contention of the single-family neighborhood zonings. I understand, those are complicated issues and a lot of variables. This is a rental within a rental community. It's a use that makes sense. The residents on either side are not noise-sensitive. They're college students. They're used to transient guests going in and out. It happens every single day. This actually frees up parking spaces in our facility. It frees them up because we don't have continuous guests every day and every night. We have sporadic guests, maybe once a week. These are great, great tenants. They're the best tenants in our entire neighborhood. They live or die based on reviews and they keep their property spotless inside and out. They are our best residents in the whole neighborhood. This issue is here to stay. It's not going anywhere. It's already here. You've let the cat out of the bag. At least give them a sundown like you're proposing to do in the single-family districts. You get, where you were recommending a five-year sundown? That's not even an expiration of doing business. That's so far into the future, it's not even relevant. Give them a sundown to conclude business so that you don't pr- present them with a hardship. This is a young family. Nobody's getting rich off this. In fact, they're, they're filling a gap that we're going to have massive vacancy in, and not the good vacancy, not a little bit of vacancy that makes it more affordable and we drop rates. It's going to be the kind of vacancy where we come before the tax assessor and appeal every one of our values. Every valuation in a multifamily community will be appealed this year because of the level of vacancy. And that's going to hurt our tax digest. So we're creating additional problems for an already strained budget. So please consider the whole picture, not just your ideology around single-family districts. Because I get that. That is contentious and heavy, a lot of things to sort out there. This is rentals within rental neighborhoods and it just makes sense. That's why Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Is there anyone else here to speak to item twenty-three before we come to commission discussion? All right. Entertained a motion from Commissioner Myers.
I'm going to, I'm going to motion to approve it as well, again.
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion for approval from Commissioner Myers. I have a second from Commissioner Link. Go ahead, Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to follow up as well, again, as much for information out there that, you know, this applicant is following the rules that we set up. This is not the developer, um, didn't buy this or developed this with the idea of this being short-term rental. In fact, I reached out to not Chase, because I've never met him before, but, uh, the other applicant, Charlie Hill, came before us and I said, what's this about? He said, I didn't know anything about this. Um, it's someone who's renting it and doing this. So he, they, they was not built for this purpose, so to clarify that. Um, that same developer who's developing on the east side has also pointed out to me that, uh, that the, the rental, the pre-registration rates are way, way, way down. And in fact, on the east side, he has another development that he's now, instead of building rentals, he's building for-sale, uh, units, um, along a street on the, the east side because the two-bedroom, one-ten-bedroom, two-bedroom units are, are over, there's an oversupply on the east side. So I just wanted to put that out there to clarify it again. I hope we address this further down the line so that we, if we don't want them, we'll, we'll change that ruling. Um, if we don't want them in multifamily apartments. Um, I, I understand that, you know, I, I don't want them in single-family, you know, commercial ones. And we're setting up requirements here, but I, I think I, I'm just trying again to be consistent with the ordinances that we put in place last year.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that, um, every night someone spends in an SDR, we, we get hotel motel tax for that. Um, at this point, you know, I'm hearing from multiple directions that there is a glut of these one- and two-bedroom units. And, and that's by design, you know, this com- commission kind of forced new builders of student housing to create those units. Um, I'd love to see some partnerships with our affordable housing providers to see if we can get families into those. Um, but in the meantime, you know, there are taxes that are, are being collected on these properties that we can funnel towards affordable housing and other community benefits. I mean, we, we designed that SDR ordinance, so RM neighborhoods were where they were deemed appropriate to go and only one can go in this neighborhood, um, which is unlike neighborhoods like Hancock and East Athens that are zoned RM despite the fact that, you know, as long as anybody can be, remember, they've been single-family neighborhoods owned by individuals lot by lot, but as many SDRs as possible have been allowed to go in those neighborhoods. And they're already existing, and that's where the concentration is. So I feel like allowing them in a neighborhood like this where it is predominantly student housing hopefully can relieve the pressure on our actual family historic neighborhoods.
Further input? Commissioner Hamby?
I'm going to make a substitute motion to deny.
Second.
All right, substitute motion from Commissioner Hamby to deny. There's a second from Commissioner Davenport. Go ahead, Commissioner Hamby.
Sure, and I, I won't have much to say. I just, I just want to say, I think it's been kind of insinuated that we're not being consistent with the ordinance. But we are being consistent with the ordinance because the ordinance calls for a special use permit. And that's what we're doing. We're deciding on whether or not this is a special, is a special, uh, this, whether or not this should be granted a special use permit. I agree with staff's recommendation that it should not be.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, and if that couple who came to me at the prior, at the Bailey Street that was not a family, then I apologize, but sure in the world it looked like a family to me. But, yeah, I agree with staff recommendation and, um, you know, that's it.
Any further input before I have Attorney Drake read the ordinance? Attorney Drake?
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to special use approval in the RM dash two, mixed-dense residential district for one parcel of land located fifteen eighty Barnet Scholz Road, unit ten-ten, and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. We'll do a roll call, beginning with Commissioner Hamby.
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes. I mean, no, sorry.
Oh, okay. Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Abstain.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no, one abstention.
All right. Uh, motion carries. All right. Uh, move on to item twenty-four. Uh, and this is, uh, a request of the Athens-Clark County Unified Government to amend section nine dash fifteen dash twenty-eight of the Code of Ordinances regarding short-term rentals. So is any member of the public here to speak to item twenty-four? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, county commissioners. My name is Brandon Smith, and my wife, Christie, and I live at one ninety-six Fortson Circle here in Athens. As a thirty-year resident of Athens-Clark County and a host of a successful short-term rental in Athens, I'm here today to speak out against the elimination of the grandfathering proposal. ACC initially considered when attempting to craft language for new regulations for SDRs in Athens-Clark County. As y'all are aware, the commission voted on a two-year sunset proposal in lieu of the grandfathering. And now there is a proposal to extend that from two to five years. My wife and I have operated a short-term rental at our former home. We now live within a mile of it. We've operated it without incident for five years. Uh, we have been operating with an ACC occupational tax permit the entire time. We're very particular about who we host and absolutely do not tolerate any type of party or nuisance behavior from any of our guests. Our neighbors whom we know have never complained. We have poured tens of thousands of dollars into this property to create the best experience possible for visitors to Athens. My wife and I have based our retirement plan on this property with this use. In the long term, having our property rights infringed upon will be devastating to us, not to mention that this proposal will likely not withstand court challenges, as our own county attorney said last year. I am not against regulating existing short-term rentals to ensure existing short-term property owners comply with the new rules and eliminate the bad actors that have caused disturbances and quality of life issues for my fellow residents. I'm not against prohibiting new short-term rentals, rentals from operating in single-family residential areas of town. With the new proposed regulation process that has been put in place, the bad apples can be dealt with by revoking their permits for violations and non-compliance without depriving the existing good ones, the local county taxpayers, of their existing property rights. I'm here to ask you to either eliminate the unconstitutional sunset proposal altogether or at a minimum, extend the sunset time out to fifteen years. This will save the ACC taxpayers the cost of fighting a losing legal battle. This will allow Athens-Clark County to continue to collect the hospitality tax from grandfathered SDRs that make up thirty percent of that tax revenue. This will protect Athens-Clark County property owners' property rights from unconstitutional takings. And this gives the county the opportunity to address quality of life issues that may arise by enforcing the current ordinances on the books, such as noise, parking, nuisance ordinances that already exist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else here to speak to item number twenty-four? Good evening.
Good afternoon. Again, you guys are going to see me a lot because I do work with the homeless population in my personal capacity. Um, so that is why I am so passionate about the housing crisis in Athens. Because of my experience and also my knowledge of the proven studies, I am well aware that, um, this idea that more housing will eventually lower prices, um, is inaccurate. I'm also well aware that short-term, um, hous- housing, as you guys have correctly stated, when you first decided to, um, sunset this practice, negatively impacts the housing market. It negatively impacts the neighborhood. And all of this, um, is to say, I would like you guys to continue the idea of sunsetting this in two years, not five. I also want to point out that the previous person said that they don't mind if there's a ban on, um, new short-term rentals uh, as long as he gets to be grandfathered in right up until his retirement in fifteen years. So I just want to make it clear that that person also knows that this is not a legal fight that, um, ACC would lose. There are twenty-seven cities in America that have banned short-term rentals outright, including New York City, which had one of the largest Airbnb markets in America. San Francisco also is recently, um, banning Airbnbs for that very same reason. Again, short-term rentals have a negative impact. And when this commission is deciding on things, um, instead of, you know, kind of deciding on them in a vacuum, when you guys decide on the overall impact on the town, that is when things like the sunsetting come into play, these things that help the community overall. So I would like, uh, just to encourage you guys to continue to vote for this, uh, to be this, the short-term rentals to be sunsetted in the original timeline that you proposed. And to know that there is, uh, no legal, uh, standing in which you could lose based on established law.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Nathan Sankey. I live at three thirty Ansley Drive on the east side. I'm going to go over three, uh, three reasons that I think the sunset clause should be extended or completely eliminated as written and approved whereby the planning committee. Everybody's been talking about the budget today. We all need more money for all the projects that we want to do. Eliminating short-term rentals will reduce thirty percent of the hotel tax. And I don't know any reason of where we're going to come up with this money, other than taxing us more on our property values. I just opened my property tax bill for my property over on the east side, and it was definitely increased from last year. Whether it's the mileage rate or the valuation amount, it's going to go up. We've already lost four hotels to student housing. We have not replaced those hotels. Constantly, the center, the arena, everybody says we're short on hotels. We're going to drive these hotels to Commerce, to Winder, to Barrow. I know for a fact that one of the baseball teams who came here for UGA, they stayed in Gwinnett. They drove a bus from Gwinnett to here. You think they ate dinners here? You think they ate lunches here? No, they stayed in Gwinnett and they ate there. My neighborhood, I have two short-term rentals in my neighborhood. I love those owners. I don't know if they're owners that live there or if they're unoccupied, but their houses are immaculate. You have to have good reviews to continue to be a successful short-term rental. I have lo- loads of long-term rentals and they look like, they just do not look good. Third thing is the need. I've already gone over the arena and the classic center. I want to talk about the hospitals. In my line of work, I deal with people who have gone through health issues and they love the fact that they have real homes to stay in, not apartment complexes, not condos, but actual homes where they don't have to see people when they know their mother is in hospice. And they might lose them next, next week. And their whole family's here. You're talking about a family of four or five who have need multiple hotel rooms. It becomes impractical for them to come here and stay with us, invest in our local economy, and to take care of their, their ailing parent or grandparent. Um, Michael Lord, um, in the planning commission put it accurately, there are some bad apples out there. No one's going to disagree that some of the neighborhoods have really bad short-term rentals. But we need to address that with our laws that are already on the books. Noise, trash, nuisance, they can all be taken care of. It should not be, um, where the long-term rentals who do obey by the laws, and then even your people that you're denying now. How, if everybody's following the rules for the multifamily, who's going to get approved? What do you guys need to do to have them approved? It's on the books. I mean, let us know what we need to do. If, if you're a short-term renter, let me know what you need to do to, to get it passed. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sankey. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jennifer Varnado. I live at seven fifty-two Weeping Willa Drive. I live in East Athens. Um, as several have spoken before me and listening to you all debate, um, tonight, it's, I think it's important to say that there are a lot of facets to this conversation. Um, but ultimately, I want to talk in support of extending the short-term rental sunset from two, at minimum to five years and possibly longer. Um, I recognize the complexity of the short-term rental situation and I appreciate the commission's efforts to find a balanced, long-term solution. Um, I, and for that, for that time period, I think it would give you all the opportunity um, to first of all, create a thoughtful valuation model. It's my understanding at the planning commission meeting, there was a, um, equation that was put forth in front of people that no one could really understand, and they didn't have a lot of time to work through that. Um, I think extending this sunset would, um, give this body time to design a fair, data-driven model without putting compliant property owners in limbo. Um, it would prevent a policy gap that It would prevent a policy gap that disadvantage owners, that disadvantages owners over renters. As the policy stands, when the sunset takes effect, tenants may still be allowed to operate short-term rentals under subleases or home hack models, while property owners who are financially responsible for taxes, maintenance, and insurance would lose that same right, and that really creates a significant equity issue. Short-term rentals fill a real housing gap in event-driven tourism. As we've heard tonight, I know the Classic Center is trying to bring more and more tourism dollars into Athens with a shortage of short-term rentals that would undermine those opportunities, which are job opportunities and tax dollars that are being brought to our community. Short-term rentals also serve non-tourism needs. It was stated before me, when loved ones are receiving treatment in local hospitals, as they are right now, today in Athens, STRs offer a home-like setting for extended stays that hotels often can't accommodate. These are compassionate, practical uses that meets the real needs for real people. With roughly 1,000 STRs in Athens Clark County and an average of 186 nights booked per year, that's over 160,000 guests that stay here annually. These visitors support restaurants, shops, service providers, and generate tax revenue funds. I understand there are some issues. As we said, there are some bad apples. I would like some transparency around that data. From what's publicly available, verified complaints and citations seem to be relatively low, but I'd like to know that information. If current, already-existing rules are being followed, we should take the time to examine whether better enforcement, not elimination, is a smarter path forward. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Varnado.
Okay, I'm up here for the third time, but there's a reason, and the STRs is a big one, okay? Is, is corporate STRs that are stealth corporations that you do not know who the owner are is devastating our community and communities all across the nation. This is a fact, okay? So there are not a few bad apples here. There are hundreds of bad apples here operating in stealth ways, and anything that y'all do, they will evade, okay? So that's the first thing. It's not a few bad apples. It's hundreds, and they're also closely correlated with tax sales and lien sales before the tax sale, as are other stealth corporations here. And I'm not talking dozens, I'm not distinguishing how many, but hundreds of stealth corporations are operating in Athens, and they're the single biggest reason for the price spike in the last three years, okay? So the other thing that people are not talking about is the problem are the platforms and the stealth operators. The platforms allow the stealth operators. Mayor Gertz and I talked about this seven years ago, about one day having a community exchange where perhaps a BIPOC or other type entrepreneur project can replace these platforms. The platforms nor the stealth operators are never going to change. There's lots of numbers. They will evade everything. So I appreciate Mr. Hamby and Mr. Davenport's prior comments and Commissioner Wright's. The idea is, the idea is do not, you cannot work your way around this legislation. They will evade it, the bad apples, the hundreds of bad apples, that we do not know who they are. Like the housing advocate from Advantage Behavioral, the whole courtscape has changed. You guys can successfully defend your actions. The idea is, what I would do is hold this, and then number two, any STR operator that's willing to sign an affidavit, who's operating the STR and who is owning it, you guys can work with them. There were a whole bunch of people at the planning commission, they're not here tonight. There's a reason for that, because they're operating in a stealth corporations.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Alina Maryland, 253 West Park Drive. Today, I'd like to address two key concerns, the sunset clause and property rights for homeowners. It was mentioned in a previous meeting that the goal of the ordinance is to convert short-term rentals to long-term rentals in order to increase housing availability. However, the current ordinance in place doesn't guarantee that outcome. In fact, it puts many homeowners in a financial bind. Most homeowners can't rent their home long-term for enough to cover their mortgage, so converting to long-term rental simply isn't a viable option for many people. In my experience, many of my clients started with short, started with long-term rentals, then switched to short-term because they couldn't rent their home long-term for the amount, for the amount needed just to break even on their mortgage or other expenses. And simply renting their home out long-term, again, isn't an option. Right now, there are over 1,000 homes actively listed for long-term rent in Athens, and there are fewer than 1,500 short-term rentals in the entire city. So the issue isn't short-term rentals. The real issue is high interest rates and the cost of living. Enforcing a sunset clause and limiting property rights isn't going to fix either of those problems. If you can't regulate how much homeowners can sell their home for, or how much they, or how much they can, or how much they can earn for rent, then it isn't fair to regulate how they choose to use their property. Not all short-term rental owners are investors. Many are just people trying to keep their homes that they've worked their entire lives for, whether it's for retirement, or second homes, or whatever they, whatever they purchased it for. As much as everyone would like to offer affordable housing, not everyone can afford to do that. Homeownership isn't cheap. All of those expenses are real, and they don't just disappear. So respectfully, I ask you guys to reconsider the sunset clause and reevaluate zoning restrictions that prohibit homeowners from renting their properties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Maryland. Is there anyone else here to speak to item number 24?
Michael McLendon, Princeton Mill. I wasn't going to speak on this because I spoke on it back in May, but I do have a suggestion for you. A lot of very good points made here tonight. What I'd suggest is that if you go look at the published research, STRs create problems. They can be a major deterrent in terms of growth in community and have an inordinate impact on housing availability and prices. And when you put that in context of the smallest geographical county in Georgia, which has a very dense population, particularly when you look inside the loop, then that problem manifests itself like being on steroids, which is why there are just such widely different views about the impact of STRs and the different kind of STRs. And I appreciate that, what, I guess a year ago, y'all put in a moratorium on STRs so you could kind of get your arms around the issue. I think you've learned a lot since then, but I don't think you have really come to grips with what is the specific problem that we're trying to solve in terms of STR policy and the ordinances or whatever we may put in place because of all these different dynamics that go on. You got to have some consistency. On one hand, if you believe that STRs impact affordable housing, then you need an STR policy that enables affordable housing. If you don't believe that, but there's something else you need to optimize, such as quality of life, then that leads you to a different strategy of what you want. Kind of getting back to Commissioner Myers' point about, let's make some differentiate here between the type of STRs we're talking about. So I'd suggest maybe you want to consider doing another moratorium or putting all of this on pause for a while now that you've learned a lot more, and figure out what is the specific problem that we're trying to solve, and what is it we're trying to optimize in terms of housing for community that that STR policy would solve.
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Is there anyone else here to speak to item number 24? Revision of the short-term rental ordinance. All right, Commissioner Hamby submitted a commission-to-find option, so I'll begin with the commissioner.
Sure. I'm going to make a motion to approve the commission-to-find option, and I was going to kindly ask our county attorney if he would. You want me to read it, Judd, or do you? I'll buy you a beer if you read it.
Yeah, I can read it.
Okay. Just to describe the changes that we made.
So the change that you'd like to make, Commissioner Hamby, is you would like to only have the commission vote to adopt the provisions related to parcels and, and to not adopt any of the provisions related to extending the sunset provision. Actually, I'll just read the language here that's in the ordinance. It is intended, the commission of Athens Clark County, Georgia, that provisions related to so-called sunsetting of legal nonconforming STR uses in the administrative process colloquially called the relief valve, as described in the proposed section 9-15-29 of the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, shall be remanded to the planning commission in accordance with section 9-43 of the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, as amended effective April 5, 2024. The planning commission is requested to review these provisions to, A, recommend the appropriate length of the sunset period, if any, recommend whether relief valve is necessary in light of the recommended length of the sunset period, and C, provide any additional recommendations specifically related to a sunset period or relief valve.
Thank you. Attorney Drake. Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. Is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
Got a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Hamby, do you want to provide any more context for?
I'm good.
Commissioner Myers?
I do, because I've had endless conversations with my constituents on this, and I think that Commissioner Hamby has made the right move with pulling back on that sunset. And just to clarify again, I might have mixed this up on the sunset and the relief valve part of this. The idea is that this is going to come back to us at, when would this come back to us? Do we have any timeframe?
There's not a specific timeframe listed in the ordinance. I don't believe there's a John.
I think we can let the planning commission do their work, and it can come back to us after they finish that.
Okay, so it would be going back through the planning commission, just to clarify.
Jim, we have one clarification. It'll go to the planning commission, the next planning commission meeting that's available under the zoning procedures law. So that's the next, the first time the planning commission period is remanded down.
Okay. And I hope we'll also address the relief valve as well. I shared with some of the work that one of my constituents did there on the wording matching up with the math, so I want to make sure that that is looked at and reviewed so that it doesn't come up as an issue again with that relief valve. So I hope that'll be looked at as well. I'm in there, so I'm glad to be supporting this.
Any further input? Commissioner Davenport?
I know it's going to be an interesting night. A motion to approve as-is, substitute motion to approve.
Substitute motion to approve the planning commission recommendation.
Planning commission recommendation, yeah.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there any further input? All right, go ahead, and have you effectively read the ordinance, Attorney Drake, or you need to add some language? Athens Clark County, Georgia, in respect to the operation of short-term rentals and for other purposes. All right, we'll do a roll call beginning with Commissioner Hamby.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Abstain.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no, one abstention.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on to public input on item 25. This is a request of the Athens Clark County Unified Government for amendments to sections of the Code of Ordinances regarding recreational vehicle occupancy. Is there anyone else here to speak to this tonight? All right, seeing none, I'll move to the body for motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the request as written by staff.
I'll second.
All right, motion from Commissioner Thornton, and I've got a second from Commissioner Link. Commissioner Thornton, any further remarks?
No.
Commissioner Link?
No, I'm just, I'm glad to see this moving forward and offering folks expanded opportunities for their living in RVs.
Anyone else? All right, have Attorney Drake read the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, in respect to recreational vehicles and for other purposes.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, we are going to move on to old and new business, and these are items three and 26 through 43, three and 26 through 43. So if any member of the public would like to speak to either three or 26 through 43, now is that time. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Lynette. I live off of North Avenue.
Lynette, what's your last name for the record?
Lynette Caseman.
Thank you.
This is my first time doing anything like this. I own a home off of North Avenue, and I've been to some of the meetings about the Raze Grant, and I really support the first thing that developers saw that was like, it's going to be a road diet, and then there's going to be a roundabout. I really like that plan better, and I think we should stick with that one so that way we can keep the $25 million grant. I can't really support the one that Mr. Payne came up with. It just didn't really have a lot of things that I liked, and there was like a wall in front of the Advantage Day Center, and I wasn't really a fan of that plan. So I think it's best to stick with the one that's going to help us get that $25 million grant and keep it. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caseman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Russell Edwards, and just wanted to provide my encouragement to the body to try and, and work through some way to draw down these $25 million for road safety on a vital corridor, a major corridor into our downtown, into the heart of our community. $25 million, that's a huge chunk that represents a major gift from the government to help make our roads safer. As you may know, Mr. Mayor, we've had 36 road fatalities, vehicle crashes, vehicle-involved crashes, deaths on our roads since 2023. There are some dangerous roads in this community, and North Avenue is no exception, and it's not the only one. Sure would be great to see some togetherness here and to get that money put to work for the community and create a safer place. For, for me, it's, it's, it can really be about, about children. You know, I have an 11-year-old son, and so I'm thinking about this all the time, you know, how, how great his days are when he's able to go places on his own and maybe ride his bike to a friend's house and experience that independence and that growth as a young person, and relieve me from having to drive him around as a daddy Uber from every little thing that he wants to do to get out of the house, you know? He becomes a happy child, and he grows into an independent-minded adult. So I think this North Avenue and these road safety grants really reflect an opportunity to cultivate a safer environment for the folks who don't drive cars, our children. And let's do it for the kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Hattie Thomas Whitehead, and I live at 221 Chesterfield Road. I am here to speak about the bottom and lip skillets, because we don't know of any descendants as of yet. I'm here to make a historical request of the city, which owns the two lots near Jackson Street. When these properties are sold to investors, I respectfully ask that a stipulation be included in the sale requiring the installation of a fixture or designated area to commemorate these two historical erased communities. This will help preserve the importance of local history and serve as a vehicle for educational opportunities for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Good evening.
Good evening, Don Woolsey, 505 Redmond Parkway. I'm here to speak in support of item 36. From my limited understanding, it seems like that this collective bargaining agreement will help maintain the current negotia, current negotiated funding for all the materials and units and staff that the fire department desperately needs. And I also alluded earlier to, on the subject of fire, our fire department, I alluded earlier to that through a conversation I was able to have some months ago as a part of the local Democratic Party with, or the union leader of the fire department, that they've had issues with water, including hot water at some of the fire stations, which is not good for hygiene, it's not good for our firefighters. So that's what I was alluding to earlier in terms of making sure we have enough in the budget as well to address that. In terms of the collective bargaining agreement specifically as well... specifically as well, we need to support our firefighters in terms, in our public unions, in terms of anything that they need to make sure that their people are able to perform at the best of their abilities. This is necessary. Luckily enough, I'm hopefully going to be joining a job which offers me a union in the next couple of months. So I'm very aware now of how thankful I can be for unions that will protect me, protect our workers, and we need to actually stand up for our local unions, including our public unions, including our gray firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Middleton. I'm from Athens, Georgia, three zero six zero seven. The first thing I want to say is I like to see the fight that you're fighting for affordable homes. That is a must that's around the city, and I like that y'all are actually fighting for that. The one that I want to speak on right now is the land bank authority. I think I'm for that. I think that if you're able to get quality land and then able to turn it into affordable homes, I think that's a good thing. I think that should be moved forward so that you can automatically start moving forward to get affordable homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Good evening.
Good evening. Jeremy Williams, fourteen forty-one Grove Level Road. I'm the Vice President of the Professional Firefighters of Athens Clark County. Start a little different and just say thank y'all. The hard work of your firefighters in the last two years, this body's commitment to public safety has led us to where we're at now. I'm pleased to tell everybody that tonight Athens is a safer community. There are more firefighters on duty tonight than about a year ago when I spoke. We have accomplished goal number one. Since passing and adopting the first collective bargaining agreement, there have been huge improvements with our firefighters, including our staffing, retention, which was identified, morale, and we're working to close those other gaps. Your firefighters here tonight say we're proud to have a voice, to be engaged with our government and our community now. Each day and each milestone we've reached has been a new challenge. It's not been easy. But in true firefighter form, a new challenge, that's where we strive. The local, the fire department administration, the manager's office, and the county government as a whole, we have worked through every challenge. Not been easy, but we've got through them. And the end result, we have produced a better service. We have produced a safer community. We have produced better working conditions for firefighters. We have won. The last two years, ACC has been the role model for fire departments and governments in the Southeast. This is what collaboration looks like. It's been a long journey. We've done a lot of work. We also know this is year two. We're just getting started good. So tonight, I'm going to ask you to accept the collective bargaining agreement as it's been presented. Continue to make history. Allow the IFF and your local to continue working. Let us keep the funding, the resources, all of these things coming into our community. But above all else, let's keep working to improve community service. If we were going to list all of our accomplishments in the last two years, I'd run out of time. We've not got all the way. We're currently working on them. But I'd like to invite each member, reach out to the local, let's have those discussions. We're proud of what we've done. Y'all should be proud of what y'all have done. This government and this group has accomplished history. Public safety truly is a team sport. ACC government and our citizens are winning. Folks, yes, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Emily Alger, President of the Professional Firefighters of Local Two Seven Nine Five. I live on five five four zero, High Shoals Road. First, I do want to thank you guys. It's definitely an extraordinary opportunity that we've had to be able to have collective bargaining. I will say, I do feel like we're definitely growing and improving, but I do feel like we've been working well together even through disagreements, but that's what it was there in design for, which has really been quite an uplifting and empowering thing for even us as firefighters, which has boosted our morale. And also, and when you have better morale, you have more recruitment, better intention, and therefore better service for our citizens. So I want to say thank y'all for that, because I can stand here very proud of all of us in this room today to allow that to happen. I also want to address a few of the questions that I've heard through some of the commissioner meetings on what we've done. Of course, just like Vice President Williams said, I can't address all of them because I would run out of time. However, a few of them, we have provided aid to some citizens within this community, especially during some of the holidays by providing some meals. We have contributed to the ACC Employee Assistance Fund that helps all of ACC employees. We've also provided assistance to many of our local firefighters that have been in need. We have also provided assistance for mental health for our, for our local firefighters. We also deployed a team to the Hurricane Helene relief to those firefighters in that community, and what that did was validate that we were recognized and we were able to provide that resource. Heaven forbid if something like that happened here. Those firefighters, the IFF, IAFF would rally, and they would send stuff here, too, partly because we're recognized, but also because we showed our due diligence and did the same. We also have done some communications training. We also are in the middle of doing a GIS study to help also, in conjunction with y'all's, I mean, it's not in partnership, but help say, yes, these findings are correct. And also, in the middle of that GIS study, we'll also have a hazard, a risk assessment for this community, which we'll be able to use to actually serve this community better. That is probably eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars worth of a resource that was brought here for free. We also are bringing a hazmat training here in January, and that is also, I don't know the price tag on that, but it's for free for this community. All these resources I just said are all for free for this community, okay? So that being said, I know I'm running out of time. A point of personal pride, we have doubled our female firefighters, so I'm personally proud of that. But I would like to ask y'all to support our CBA and all public safety requests. Supporting our public safety helps us to support and provide a better service to our community.
Thank you, Ms. Alger. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Laura David. I'm at one fifty-five Clyde Road. It's funny, the first time I ever did this, many years ago, it was to argue for the fire department because they were losing two positions and a ladder truck. I'm here to talk about ten seventy-five Gaines School Road. I know that there's a possibility of withdrawing the request. I'm actually asking you to just outright deny it. It would, that would allow the developer in the neighborhood to work together, come up with some ideas. There was no plan put forward with the rezoning request. It was completely broad and vague, and this is a really complex intersection. It's a camera light. It's the main entrance for the neighborhood, but it's a heavily trafficked area. It backs up routinely at all hours of the day, and going into Green Acres, you have a commercial entrance and exit on either side of the street already. So it really matters for public safety, for kids, for animals, for people of all ages that are walking and biking in that neighborhood. Aside from the traffic considerations, the safety is kind of paramount. So I'm really concerned that this would give us time to work together and find what will work. But yeah, between the bank and the home health, it's already considerably backed up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dave. Good evening.
Good evening. David Ellison here to speak on item twenty-eight. Here today to request that we be allowed to withdraw the zoning application. Ultimately, right now, my client no longer has his property under contract. We cannot persuade the property owner to get comfortable with a age-restricted zoning condition, and so we're asking that you allow us to withdraw this application to keep this property open for the next year. My client plans to apply for the tax credit skin during the next round. This property could be an option. Another property could be an option, too, but we want to keep this property on the table. It's unfortunate that we couldn't get the property owner comfortable with that, but we're going to try again next year, and we appreciate all your time, and we hope for your support. We'll hopefully come around later on this year or early next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, my name is Willie Green, Athens, Georgia native. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item Thirty-two, I believe it is. Yes, dealing with the SPOS Twenty-Eleven Youth Center. As you know, I've been here and speaking on behalf of dealing with the youth. I have a long history of dealing with the youth. My family have a long history of dealing with the youth, but this is not about me right now. I want to talk about, and using your own words, in January last year, there was a thirty-three-minute debate here about whether or not we need to hire a consultant to give us a survey and speak to the people. Five of you, and we paid four hundred, around $450,000 for this survey. Half of you, five of you voted in support of it, five voted against it. Some of you who spoke in support of it were saying, listen, we need to hear from the people, right? Commissioner Davenport said, we need more pickleball courts. We need more basketball courts. Commissioner Link said, we need more pickleball courts. We need more basketball courts. Those who opposed to say, wait a minute, why are we spending $450,000 on something we already know? In two thousand and eight, we spent $175,000 on a master plan. What did that yield? Commissioner Fisher said, where is that report? We don't have that report. So we keep doing all these reports. But here's the thing. You're voting for three options, and what I want and what I'm suggesting is look at option one, the one that Commissioner Fisher suggested that we put it in the RFP. But I noticed that the staff, despite what the master plan stated that District Six and District Nine needs a community center. There's no community centers in District Six or District Nine. But the staff, whoever staff is, recommended that we build a half-basketball court at Rock Springs at four and a half million dollars. This is the recommendation. Don't believe, take my word for it, look at it. Now, what will a half-court basketball court do? Not a thing. This, you paid Barry Dunn $450,000. They said, we need multiple courts. They said, we need it in District Six, and they need it in District Nine. But yet, the recommendation here is to do a half-basketball court at Rock Springs. Rock Springs has a swimming pool. They have four basketball courts. Just less than a mile away, they have HG Was as a full basketball court. So what I'm here to say is I support option one, and what we also know in talking to Commissioner Fisher, I mean Commissioner, sorry, City Manager Blaine, said, leisure services is under staff. They're not accredited. So obviously, leisure services can't do the job. So why don't you rely on the private sector to step in under option one and fill that void as a partnership with Athens Clark County? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Hey there, my name's Andy Savoy. I'm here on behalf of Core Spaces, also known as CS Acquisition Vehicle LLC. We're at sixteen forty-three North Milwaukee Avenue in Chicago, Illinois. Core Spaces is a national developer and owner of housing. We own Newberry and Hub Mitchell in town, and we have been in discussions with the ADDA and others and staff about a potential project contemplated and related to items thirty-four and thirty-five on this agenda. This potential mixed-use project will provide a minimum of three hundred and fifty public parking spaces, probably more, that would be owned and operated by the ADDA. It would provide roughly $2.7 million in privately-funded investment into public infrastructure to not only create sewer capacity for our project, but also create additional capacity that would allow the Bethel Midtown Village project to proceed. It would also involve roughly a $7.9 million fee paid to fund the creation of affordable housing in Athens, paid per the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And we're also anticipated to generate roughly $3.8 million per year in additional property taxes. Of that number, about a million and a half dollars would go into the East Downtown TAD, and seventy percent of that, roughly a million dollars per year, would go to East Athens for the life of that TAD. Additionally, there would be generous public spaces provided along Jackson Street, and we'd be protecting the exterior of the foundry with a historic facade easement. And with respect to the earlier comment about a permanent installation along Jackson Street, we'd be happy to do something like that to further connect the project to the community. So I'm here to respectfully ask for your support on items thirty-four and thirty-five. If approved, that will allow us to continue with the ADDA to negotiate and finalize a full development agreement, which will have to come back here for final approval before anything can be done. So we're excited to be here. My entire team is here, willing to step up and answer any questions or speak to any issues as they come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savoy. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Benny Coleman. I live at two seventy-one Rose Drive. I'm going to make it sweet and short. I support what Mr. Woodard Green said. It makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Is there anyone else here to speak to any item of old or new business tonight? Again, that's item three and twenty-six through forty-three. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Val Williams. I live at four forty-three Third Street. North Avenue is not really considered District Two. I mean District, yeah, District Two, but that's where I live, and that's a way that I go every day when I leave home. You either got to go to North Avenue or go to Broad Street. If you go to Broad Street, the students are walking out in the street on their phones, so I choose to always go North Avenue to downtown. But now, the issue with North Avenue, there is, the one reason there's so many accidents, it boils back down to the homeless situation, North Avenue. All day long, I can't leave home without seeing homeless people standing, sitting, walking, crossing the streets, running and stuff. If y'all did something about the homeless situation, that would stop so many people from running across North Avenue. The person that said his child can't ride his bike, like on the North Avenue area, that's the same way I wouldn't put my child on Broad Street and tell him to ride a bike, because then you know somebody's going to have an accident, because Broad Street is a busy street coming into Athens. North Avenue is a busy street coming into Athens. Turnaround or whatever they want to call it, that's going to slow up traffic. If they try to make a bike lane on North Avenue, you're going to have a whole lot of problems, because when people come in to work in the morning from Madison County and Elbert County or wherever they're coming into Athens, if you make that a one lane for bikers, I go that way every day. I have not seen a bike up here on Prince Avenue. I saw one bike the other day. But every time you go up Prince Avenue, you see several cars. You're going to see hundred cars, hundreds of cars a day on North Avenue. You don't see a bike. If somebody want a bike route, what they need to do is take some of that land and make a bike route outside of the four lanes for North Avenue. And another issue, too, on North Avenue is, I live on Third Street. There are four bus stops. None of them have a cover. At North Avenue and Strickland Street, right there, that intersection, there are three bus stops. All three of them have a cover. Something is wrong with that picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there anyone else here to speak to old or new business tonight? Again, those are items three and twenty-six through forty-three. Good evening.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't know if it was...okay. Al Lewis, again, Eastside Athens. So I wanted to talk about item twenty-six, which is a development that WNA Engineering would be working on. This company was also unanimously approved by this commission to completely clearcut the Deco Lake Forest, which is right in front of my house. I want to just bring some things to your attention. I understand that the area for item twenty-six is zoned commercial at this point, but it is actually a green space. And so it brings up the issue of approving areas for housing. They should, we should start thinking about the eco-impact of them rather than just what they are zoned as. We have a lot of green space in Athens, and right now, when we approve all of these clearcuttings, there is an eco-impact. Athens had the same amount of rainfall... amount of rainfall as Atlanta did during Hurricane Helen. Atlanta flooded. Athens did not. And that is because of the green space, the trees that we have that absorbed all of that water. Those areas are really important to keep our area from flooding. They're also really important in ensuring that the traditionally urbanized communities in our town, black and brown people, we have vastly different health outcomes than people from places like Atlanta who have far less green spaces. So considering that WNA Engineering is doing a lot of clearcutting in our town for housing, I would also like to point out that this is not a company, a developer, that ever works in affordable housing. Let me clarify, because I don't want Buck Bacon to talk to me about that again. They do one charity project a year, but when they aren't doing that, they're gentrifying Athens. They built the standard, which pioneered the $1,500 studio. They built the Mark, which also has a $1,500 studio. And as many of the developers here tonight said, they, there is actually a glut of housing in Athens. No one can afford them. That is why those 800 units are sitting empty. And we are now about to allow them to, once again, clearcut another area for unaffordable housing that will sit empty. So I ask you to start considering the eco-impact. Also, consider the fact that more housing does not actually bring down the housing prices. The studies that have been done show that what ends up happening is people leave, and then the demand goes down.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. All right, old and new business, Item 3 and 26 to 43.
Thank you. Michael McLendon, Princeton Mill. I just want to speak briefly. I've sent you information on a number of these topics, but I'm not going to hit all of them. I just want to support Mr. Green tonight in talking about youth and community enrichment. I've had discussions, for example, with Commissioner Fisher about, in my area, uptown suites. We have a lot of kids up there, but we have no recreation facilities for them. And so when I look at the history of this project, I have to scratch my head and say, why aren't you asking questions about, why did we spend over a half a million dollars, starting in 2008 and recently, on studies for leisure services when we already knew what the answer to the test question was? And the answer is, we need recreation facilities, community centers in two commission districts. We already know that. And so why do we come up with a staff recommendation that wants to put more and more and more and more in Rock Springs? And as someone who's been involved with youth before in another life, you can't do zip with a half-basketball court. You need as many basketball courts as you can build, because you need to keep as many youth as you can tired and sweaty and busy, as many hours of the day and into the night as you can. So I support Commissioner Fisher's alternative about doing that. And the second thing is Item 34. You know, when this first came on the agenda, it was framed as a parking issue. But the more and more you listen to it, it's not a parking issue. It's a major development issue in downtown Athens that's going to create higher and higher density, that appears to be only feasible if Athens-Clark County and the Downtown Development Authority do something in terms of a land swap, and then Athens-Clark County winds up with a half-million-dollar liability. So I think there's a little, there's a lack of transparency here with the public about what this issue really is and this development. And I encourage you to table this and have some hearings. Let the public know what's going on. Let the public speak about this issue, so that there's a full vetting of what these transactions are all about and what the long-term commitments are of Athens-Clark County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Good evening.
Hey, Michael Chowey, 109 Mark Twain Circle. I didn't plan on coming up here about this, but I agree with what a lot of these people have said. But I feel like there's been a little bit of, like, confusion about roundabouts. I'm not quite sure why, but roundabouts are proven time and time again to increase safety and speed up traffic. It's just, it's how they work. I know it's weird, that it doesn't feel intuitive, but that's literally what it does. That's how it works in every city that has roundabouts. I'm sure it works here. I know we have a few roundabouts. Yeah, I don't know. Roundabouts are good. Build them.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else here to speak to any item of old or new business this evening before we take a break?
Okay, I'm limiting myself to 30 seconds. The Land Bank Authority vote, you know, that's, there is a need for a Land Bank Authority, okay? I think that if you could add to the language in the ordinance, that any Land Bank Authority clearing of any property is done in a public vote in front of the mayor and commission, it might work. The Land Bank Authority cannot operate in secret anymore. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening.
My name is John Williams. I'm President and CEO of WNA Engineering. You guys have seen me up here for many, many years. Just a couple of clarifications. I know that someone spoke in opposition to the development we're proposing on Atlanta Highway. WNA is not the developer. We don't develop, we don't build houses. We represent clients. We're far underserved on all housing types, but particularly on affordable and attainable housing types. And this development has attainable housing. This property is not currently zoned commercial. It is zoned as a PD currently, and we're amending the PD to a plan that is both physically and financially viable at this time in this day. In fact, some of the site was already cleared and some infrastructure put in place back before the downturn in 2010, when the property, the development on the property stopped. As far as I know, we've had, been through six public hearings on this, and this is the first person to bring any objection forth. As long as I've been doing this, very rarely do we get all the way to this point and only have a single person show up at public hearings in opposition to something. This is a good project with a good client, and will do a good job on the development. They have the capability to get this done, and they'll build this project, and it'll be well-maintained for years to come. So please, take the opportunity tonight. We talk about it over and over and over again. I've listened to so many meetings and talked to so many of you about how we need more housing, how we need more affordable housing, how we need more attainable housing. This is an opportunity. This is an opportunity that very few people, it seems, have any objection to, based on public comment. So I ask you tonight to please pass this and vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else before we take a break? Any item of old or new business? Again, Items 3 and 26 through 43. All right, it is 8:35. Let's take a 10-minute break.
All right, everybody, we are picking up where we left off and we're going to go ahead and take up old and new business. First item of older new business is one that moved from the consent agenda and that was item number three, that's our annual GDOT receipt of the L-MIG funds for road surfacing. And Commissioner Johnson, you asked that this move to discussion, so I'm going to be...
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted this removed from consent because as I understand from a mistake I made last month that if I disagree with any item on consent, I shouldn't, I should indicate that. So this is one that I disagree with, I would not have voted for, and the reason is because we're not in compliance with Title VI. I know that I spoke about it in January, at the January voting meeting and at the February voting meeting, and thankfully Commissioner Myers asked for any type of information or progress or status report on where we are with this Title VI program and to share that with the, with the commission. We did receive that report in April, however, we've not moved any, we've not moved that needle or been confirmed that it's, we are in compliance and they were reporting that. I had, I also confirmed that with the Title VI coordinated for the state of Georgia, so that's why I'm not, I didn't want it to stay on consent.
As the manager Griffin or attorney Drake, do you have any kind of feedback regarding our Title VI compliance?
I can speak to it. We just, I think yesterday responded to the audit from the state of Georgia, they're auditing our Title VI program, so we hope to get some further guidance on whether we're in compliance. You know, I don't want to argue about the compliance issue, I understand Commissioner Johnson's concern and respect that, so we'll see. We certainly want to comply and make sure we're doing the right things and we responded to the questionnaire from the title, from the state of Georgia officer, I think it's probably who Commissioner Johnson's referring to and hope to hear back soon on some guidance. You got anything to add, Brian?
Yeah, one more thing.
Anybody else before I return to Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Wright?
But we can go ahead and approve this agenda item, is that correct? And I just wanted to say I haven't been able to talk since seven o'clock, I just want to put that down for the record.
Commissioner Wright, are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve number three.
I'll second.
All right. Commissioner Link is second, are there any remarks for our attorney Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, just for clarity on, on the Title VI, how does that affect us on the federal level though? Um, I know we're trying to get some guidance and again to Commissioner Johnson's point, should we, should we be going forward right now?
Well, I think, I think one of the interesting thing is the day before we got the letter, approximately the day before, not exactly, right before we got the request to do our audit on us from the state of Georgia, we got another letter from the Federal Department of Transportation saying that some of the things they're supposed to do in the Title VI program are not lawful anymore because of one of Trump's, President Trump's executive orders. So we've asked, also asked as part of this for some clarification from the state on what should we be doing here, you know? So there's a little uncertainty, but I'm comfortable with, with that, we recommend the commission go forward with approving this. We've sought the guidance, you were talking about Commissioner Fisher, directly from the state, from the person who's doing the audit, and we sent the letter to the legal counsel for the Georgia Department of Transportation to ask them for guidance as well.
So I guess moving forward then, so should, is this something then that we need to table then and wait till we get some type of guidance?
Well, I would, I would be hesitant on that because I wouldn't be surprised if the state of Georgia, if the GDOTs hasn't respond, they're probably going to have to think about how they're going to respond to that, I'm just being quite frank with you.
No, I agree, and there is, there also is an application deadline of the fifteenth of this month that we need to submit this under in order to be eligible.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Okay.
Any other input? All right, there's a motion and a second, there's an ordinance associated with this, item three.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the FY 2025 operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if ordered from the Georgia Department of Transportation, local maintenance improvement grant, L-MIG for resourcing roadways and other purposes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, please note that for the record, thank you. All right, item twenty-six regards a development plan at forty-five thirty Atlanta Highway and one twenty-five Bedgood Road, and Commissioner Johnson, you asked this be held so that there could be more opportunity for community engagement, I know you've had that opportunity, so I'll turn to you for a motion.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to motion for support and approval of this proposed development project.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Johnson, second from Commissioner Link. Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson, if you have any remarks.
This is a big deal, there, this is, I just did a Google and second to, when this is complete, this will be the largest residential development project in Athens, and I wanted to do my due diligence, I did review the report from the planning commission and I respect their expertise. There were some comments though that I felt were, that were subjective, and I wanted to dive deeper and I did. I traveled to two separate counties and I did site visits on my own to look at what a potential neighborhood that this developer builds, what it looks like. And they, they are, they look like people who work hard for a living live there, there are some pluses and minuses, but things were fixable, I think in the grand scheme of things. The other thing I did was host a drop-in town hall that went really well last week, and there were surprisingly many people who were in support of it and specifically stated, thank you for offering the opportunity to add density because we need that. And I want to be consistent, as someone new on the commission, I used to hear and still hear us talk about increasing our housing stock, providing housing variety, and I think supporting this does those two things.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Link is second, are there any further remarks?
Um, yeah, I just, I, I think this is a good opportunity to get a lot of modest owner occupied, middle-class housing on the market, and I don't have any problems, I've had some discussions with, with the planners and I feel like there are some sound reasons behind the changes that are being requested to the PD.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further remarks? Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Johnson as well for that public meeting, I drove over there thinking it would take me so long to get over there from the east side, but it only took about twenty minutes. But anyway, I was, that was very helpful for making a decision, looking at the large poster boards of the development and seeing, actually getting an idea about that green space in between the alley green space and whether or not that was big enough to be a community space or not, and that made me feel much better about it, so thank you for that.
Stitch and discussion, remember that?
Oh, I do, yes, the very distant West Athens, sorry, somewhere in the hinterland of...
Reminiscing, reminiscing.
Commissioner Thornton?
Yeah, I also went to Commissioner Johnson's pop-in on that rainy night, but I also was impressed because the questions that I think from the constituents in her district was very upbeat, and knowing that that property has been vacant for so long, talking to our former coroner, Mr. Sonny, this design is very similar to the original one before the, the housing flop, so housing is needed and, and we're not, you know, if, if, housing is needed, and I think this is one of the first big steps and I'm glad it's, and I'm glad it's happening, so I will be supporting this.
Any further input?
I'm glad Abida was talking when she was talking to the coroner.
Former coroner, the former coroner.
Attorney's Ray, could I have you read the ordinance for item number twenty-six, please?
In order to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to revising a planned development in the CGRM dash two and RS dash five, commercial, general, mixed density residential and single-family residential planned development districts for three parcels of land comprising approximately two hundred point five zero acres and total and located forty-five hundred and four-five-three-zero Atlanta Highway and one twenty-five Bedgood Road and for other purposes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to item twenty-seven, this is in District Eight, and of course the petitioner has requested that this allowed to be withdrawn. Commissioner Myers, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the applicant's request for withdrawal and to withdraw this.
Second.
All right, there's a second from Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner Myers, any further remarks?
Yeah, I just wanted to report in, I know there are people over on the east side listening to this, and we had one resident here this evening, the applicant met with residents, about twenty-five of them over at Firehouse Seven, like two weeks ago on May nineteenth, heard the concerns about the appropriateness of the use, expanding it to CN, being too broad, too many different things. The applicant seems very willing to work with us on this, and is already setting up a meeting for later on this week and including a member of the church and a member of the Green Acres neighborhood, and look to really see if it can be put back in, either with a CO, CO zoning with some variances or revision to the, the planned development, but we're going to, he's going to work with our planning director to see what the best action forward with is on this. And again, for anyone who's listening, this will not then, this will go to the planning commission before it comes back to us, so I wouldn't expect to see this on our agenda even if something happened right away until like August, September probably. Yeah, probably around the earliest on September, so that should give us a lot of time to get input as well or whatever he comes up with. So I want to thank the residents for coming out and also thank the developer for really listening and taking into consideration the concerns of the neighborhood.
Commissioner Davenport is second, or then Commissioner Hamby?
Um, you know, Commissioner Myers.
Mr. Hamby?
Sure, I'm going to make a substitute motion that we deny this, deny this request.
All right, we've got a substitute motion from Commissioner Hamby to deny...
The request to withdraw, or the whole thing, really.
To deny the approval, and a second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Hamby, any further remarks?
Yeah, I just, you know, I've heard the, the resident come up and talk about, you know, just go ahead and voting it down so that, so that the neighborhood has a chance to, to make sure that if something's going to be done there, something good is done, something transparent is done. You know, I don't like the fact that a developer will be going and meeting with, no offense, Bruce, but it's, it's not, I mean, going and meeting with our director to figure out what they could do. You know, this is an opportunity for the developer to go do appropriate planned development or an amendment to the planned development and, and make it an open process so that, so that this is so close to the neighborhood, they need to know, you know, what's, what the specifics are. You know, if you're going to put a restaurant here, what time is the garbage going to be picked up? What kind, what times of service delivery is going to come around here? And such as that, so, so yeah, this, this needs, this needs, you know, and I used to represent Green Acres years ago, remember when we were super district commissioners, Mayor Gertz, those were, those were good days, but it gave me an opportunity to also represent an area that is, appreciates their neighborhoods and appreciates what goes in on there, and I know Carol, Commissioner Myers knows this, but I think in all fairness to the people that live in Green Acres in that neighborhood, by being so close, this needs to be, be denied.
Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, ma'am.
Further input, Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'd like to, to obviously respond to that. There were twenty-five or so people, this was thoroughly discussed, I told people not to show up tonight because they were, many of them were, you know, I put this out on the neighborhood listserv to allow them to know what was going on. These are the ideas, it is not the planning director is doing this, the planning director is going, the applicant is going with the ideas that he got from the community concerning the use, the square footage, keeping the buffer, working with the church, the church was also involved and had several meetings with the developer, so I would not say that this was not involved. And of course, obviously, they'll have a lot of more opportunities as well because whatever comes through this with some input from the developer, with the neighbors, will go on to the planning commission as such, so denial will keep it off the, for anything being done with it for a year, this developer, a lot of the, you know, anyway, I, I regret that I didn't have more people come down to express that because there were many more people who showed up, and you know, I had talked with the, one of my neighbors called me earlier today and she was so thankful that we were going in this direction. Most of them want a commercial office, this developer is now willing to very much keep it a commercial office and make either the planned development or a commercial office with variances. So, you know, you all do what you want, but as a commissioner of that area, I feel I've been very responsible to the constituents.
Anyone else before I return to Commissioner Hamby?
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, and I would agree with Commissioner Myers, the developer has been working really well with the community and with Myers in addressing the community concerns, several meetings, town halls, back and forth, so the developer is not a nefarious or bad person, he's willing to, he's willing to work, he is actually working with the community, so you know, I don't, I don't see the need for denying, but I completely understand why there would be some residents who, who would like to go in that direction, but just keep in mind that the developer is actually working with the community now.
Mr. Hamby?
Well, I appreciate that, but I, I think at the end of the day, I think the folks over there that would have been in support of withdrawal may not know that it would come back to us as early as August or September, but also I just think it's incumbent upon us, we don't, we don't, we don't represent the developers, we represent the people in the neighborhoods, and, and that's, you know, I just think that, that having, having a year for the, for the neighborhood to, to, you know, two or three months is not a long time for a big neighborhood like Green Acres to determine what's, what's, what, what they'd like to see, and it's not really incumbent upon the neighbors, I mean, the, the, the developer needs to come with a plan and, and go from there, so I made my point, that's enough, thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes, I'd like to respond to the mayor directly, I take offense at that, I'm not working for the developer, I'm working for the residents, thank you.
Let's go ahead and read the ordinance.
To amend the code of, ordinance, the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning one parcel of land comprising approximately zero point eight acres located ten seventy-five Gaines School Road from COPD, commercial office planned development to CN, commercial neighborhood and for other purposes.
All right, begin with a substitute motion from Commissioner Hamby. Begin with a substitute motion from Commissioner Hamby, we'll do a roll call.
Hamby?
This is a yes to deny.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
No.
Taylor?
Yes, to deny.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
No.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
No.
Four yes, six no.
All right, so we'll return to the original motion from Commissioner Myers, to, to allow withdrawal so that they can continue to act in good faith.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Eight yes, two no.
All right, motion carries. All right, we'll see some other version of that in future cycle. All right, item 28, similarly, has a petitioner who's requested to be allowed to withdraw, and you heard from an agent for that this evening, and this is in District 1, so I'll turn to Commissioner Davenport.
Yeah, this was an odd one, and I pray that Allison and the developer and Atlanta continue to work. But the property owner has, you know, it's his property, he has asked for, to withdraw. We were working on a senior citizen, 55-plus, old attractive land, is much needed on that side of town, everything was going good, and then I guess the applicant, the property owner last week decided, ah, he wants to go in a different direction. So, motion to approve the withdrawal.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Taylor, any follow-up?
No, I just remember the, when we saw it on the screen, thought it was gonna be a, I don't wanna say open call, but.
A great idea for certain people.
Yeah, a great idea for certain people, like, you know. And so, I'm glad to see that the applicant is going to give his request requested.
Any follow-up from anybody else in the body? We'll get a ordinance read from Attorney Drake.
Orders to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 2.06 acres located 155 Wit Davis Road from CN Commercial Neighborhood to RM-3 Mixed-Density Residential and for other purposes.
All in favor of motion to allow withdrawal, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Item number 29 is the Haley's Comet of Agenda Items, the Boulevard and Nakuchi intersection, and I think Commissioner Link, this is very close to your home, what you got?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a CDO here, and I want to thank staff for meeting on-site with a bunch of the adjacent residents and several other folks from the neighborhood who have a lot of experience with this intersection. There was some angst from the neighborhood about the staff proposed plan, which was very hyper-engineered, big giant islands in the middle of the road. These are two neighborhood streets that do see a significant uptick in traffic for 30 minutes or so twice a day. We came together and came up with the plan to just have the crosswalk on the one side of the traffic circle on Boulevard, on the downhill side. There is no sidewalk on the other side of Nakuchi Avenue, so we felt that there's no need for the crosswalk there. In fact, we felt it would only add confusion to have people go through the roundabout, and it's not a roundabout, it's a traffic circle, and then see another crosswalk. Staff has approved this design. It also cuts the price almost in half. So, I'm happy to know that there will be money for another crosswalk in some other neighborhood somewhere.
Motion from Commissioner Link for approval of the design that she advocates for, is our second?
Second.
All right, we've got a second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Taylor? Commissioner Taylor, any remarks about that?
Hopefully, the money that was saved from her district can go in my district for a crosswalk.
Just saying. I have a couple places in the east side that we could use.
Budget approval will be next Tuesday.
That's not part of the motion.
Few more months, few more dollars at the bank. Commissioner Davenport?
I just wanna know who did the rendering.
I did, and I added this to that.
Cause I was about to say staff, come on now.
No, they, I, I used scissors and a highlighter.
Let's vote.
Flowers.
Let's vote.
Let's vote before Mike comes up with a deny.
Further?
Yeah, let's hurry up.
Further input? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there an ordinance system?
I was gonna say, there is one that's called we approve the CDO, we don't have to approve it, cause we're not changing signage.
Oh, I see. Okay. Question over here, man. Question.
I have a comment, just for the record, for just all of our districts, I think Commissioner, you'll remember, we asked, Commissioner Thornton and I both were impressed that you're so successful in getting all of the traffic calming measures for your constituents. You are dogged in your approach and just continuously requesting it, and we don't, I don't see that in District 6, and I just want to be successful too. I have neighborhoods that have been on the list for just speed bumps for years, and what they received were temporary speed bumps. I, I would like to get with you later, but I just wanted to say this for the record, you know, far as equity and requests and needs and traffic calming. Cars are everywhere, people are everywhere, but I do support this. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll note some of the improvements, I think go back to Hugh Logan as Commissioner of this district.
I mean, I'll add that, you know, this is an extremely organized neighborhood of dogged individuals who do not let up, I mean, staff will tell you. They call staff before they call me, so they're, it's on the residents.
And then we'll see T-Spots coming to us before long, so we can have some systemic conversations about this. All right, item 30, Commissioner Davenport is the, we did, item 30 is the GOC report regarding the Reunited Land Bank Authority, one of many tools in the box for affordable housing, and I think your committee has made some solid recommendations around this, including some dollars from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, do you wanna?
Did we vote?
We did.
Motion to approve.
I thought we stopped them.
I think we stopped it.
I don't think they voted.
We didn't vote on the billboard.
No, stop for questions. Sarah, did we vote?
We, we did vote, but then somebody had some questions.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and it was unanimous.
All right, we're punchy, let's keep going.
It's good.
Commissioner.
All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, all this does is get the staff, get the land bank authority back up together, and hopefully we get some good stuff coming out.
Commissioner Fisher?
No, I think, you know, I appreciate GOC, you know, doing our due diligence on this, on land bank, I think it's gonna be a start. What we're trying to do is get this back up going and, and give us an opportunity to possibly purchase land or property in order to gain help with our housing stock. So, I think it's a start.
Commissioner Johnson?
Hi, thank you so much. I, I do also appreciate the hard work from my colleagues in this endeavor. However, I am confused about the clarity of what the role is. I, I have documentation, the agenda item hasn't changed to help clarify and support and strengthen the reason to activate the land bank authority. The county attorney agreed with me twice on the record that initially is identified for blighted properties. We have a list of properties Athens Clark County owns. I watched all the videos and read the minutes. The minutes are pretty identical, but I do have some notes, just really quickly, I would like to go through about the land bank authority and some concerns. So, the broad use of land is too broad, that's one. The lack of guarantee of affordable housing, that was the reason why it was instituted by the Georgia Constitution. The permissible use is too broad under Georgia Code 484109. Land banks can use the property for public spaces, commercial, industrial, conservation areas. I would like to have, if there was a plan before the activation, I would be thrilled, just like the individuals who spoke out about the support of the land bank authority. I don't think it's a bad thing, I think it's a nebulous thing. We do not know what's going to happen after today if it's approved. Zoning changes, the land bank can alter zoning potentially favoring non-affordable housing developments. And in the 10, the October 21st meeting last year, Commissioner Link commented, saying, I quote, "Using the land bank can bypass normal slower channels and could expedite zoning changes for variance, and these changes could be used by the board." There's a risk of this influence. Developers on board, discussing having developers on the board due to their expertise, could lead to conflicts of interest or prioritization of profit-driven projects over affordable projects. That was indicated in the, also in the October 21st meeting. Productive use is vaguely defined. Focus on economic value over housing needs. Urban 3's influence said to push maximize value per acre via mixed-use multifamily or commercial. I want us to be consistent. We say density, we say variety. This is nebulous and it's obtuse, and it doesn't clarify that it's for affordable housing. I would like us to establish that beforehand. There's no binding commitment to stick with affordable housing, that, that plan, right after we vote, if we don't establish a plan now. Just super quick, in the October meeting, there was, well, in the November meeting, there was an expert, Sean Edwards, from the Land Bank Authority in Augusta.
Is everybody comfortable giving Commissioner Johnson additional time?
Yeah, she can have it.
This expert stated that the tax commissioner has the capacity to transfer a property that is tax delinquent and go through, that has gone through judicial foreclosures process and for non-judicial sales. This is not the correct order. The correct order is to look at what we own. That's what was stated at the May 6th meeting, the voting meeting in May. One of the members of the GOC said this is for the housing on our list that we, I mean, not the housing, but the list of properties on the Athens Clark County list, just to get rid of that, you know, those properties that we don't use, to create affordable housing opportunities. This, this is not the correct order, I don't support it. I do think it's a good idea, but I would like a plan of action before the action. Like, what's the plan? And then put that in order. There's, we must have a process, we must have a policy, and the fact that no one's discussing that. We don't have to do it backwards. And we always talk about the way we do our processes is not in a correct order, or a logical order, a meaningful order, or helpful order. This is an opportunity to get it right. That's all.
Commissioner Davenport is chair, I'll turn to you first, and then Commissioner Link, if you just want to particularly outline next steps.
So, Section 2, the mayor commission direct the manager to have unified government staff, work with the LBA to return to the mayor and commission with an operations and staffing plan for the Athens Clark County Land Bank Authority, including a two-year work plan, staffing, contracting, budget, and funding request. So, this is just to get it back started. It'll come, anything, so nothing will happen, you just get staff, hey, this is what we have on the books, these are the properties, what plan do we have? And then everything after that, money, funding, direction, movement, comes back to us for determination.
I do want to kind of make the one small additional note, that members of the authority would be members of this commission.
Yeah.
So, Commissioner Link and then Commissioner Thornton.
Yeah, so the last whereas on the resolution has a bunch of bullet points, you know, giving direction, or stating the purpose for us exploring this issue. And we talk about exploring opportunities for private sector partnerships, an approach to resolving heirs' properties issue that impact availability of affordable housing, the partnering with ACC staff to recommend ACC GOV properties for disposition, and exploring opportunities to leverage current affordable housing investment strategy investments for affordable housing strictly. I mean, the main purpose for us undertaking this recommendation is to direct the power of the land bank authority towards affordable housing. And the next step is for the staff to come forward with further recommendations to reenact this authority, so they can then develop their mission statement and their rules and, and, you know, we don't even know how many people are gonna be on this thing. This is just, oh, it is fine?
It's gonna be fine.
I mean, this is just to, just to kickstart it, I mean, it's, just to get it off the ground.
Commissioner Thornton?
Mayor, I have a substitute motion. I am motioning that Part B, that dollar amount, be taken away. I think it's $275,000. I support A. I think once we get the committee together, they should come back with a budget for us. In light of how we, you know, allocated money in the past, I just think it is very diligent on our part to not put a dollar amount, and I surely do not want that dollar amount to be going into consultants unnecessarily. So, I do support the recommendation. I appreciate the committee's work. I think Commissioner Davenport made it very clear, they've been working on this since last August, I don't want to discount that, and I do think there's some validity. And I also think the concerns that Commissioner Johnson has is outlined in the next steps. Will, everything she's concerned about will come out, but I don't, I think that the dollar amount should not be attached right now. Let's see what we're, we're gonna come up with.
There's a substitute motion to proceed with approval with the absence of funding that would be determined at a future point. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Hamby, any?
No, it makes sense. I mean, you know, it's just, it's gonna come back to us anyway, so let's see what the plan is first, and then, and then, and then go from there. I mean, and then may want to make some adjustments to the plan, or may need, may need more money, may need less. So, let's don't put, let's don't put a dollar amount on it until we know what the plan actually wants to do. It's kind of silly.
Can we ask the, the GOC chair or committee to explain where the 275 came from and what the budget is for?
Yes, so the budget, so like, let's say, so it won't be for, cause it won't be for like consultants, but like, let's say, we want, let's say that's a parcel of land that Athens Clark County owned, and we needed a tax appraiser for it. Do we have a tax appraiser for it? And we say, that's gonna cost some money. I don't know if we have it inside, but that's just an example. Can staff elaborate on that, or give an example? But the 275 was, we felt was, we kind of matched it from what other communities had started their LBAs with, and with the money we had and the lit tech funded, we felt that 275 was a good start for a two-year plan.
Attorney Drake or Manager Griffin, I don't know if you have anything else?
I don't know that I can add a lot to that. The example you gave was a good one in terms of having a little bit of money. When that starts and when it came back to this group, you know, I think would be y'all's decision.
Okay. Commissioner Thornton?
I don't want to mention something, and the person's not here, but I did talk to Intram County Assistant Manager Andrew, and he said it was a placeholder. And I don't know what a placeholder is. I think that when the committee comes back, again, they're gonna give us recommendations. So, if we have to purchase something, we should be able to figure out the money. It's not, we spend and we don't think about what happens later. So, I'm not taken away from that power of the, or the authority or the direction. I just think that in these budget crisis days, we gotta be a little bit more diligent on how we allocate money. We don't need to be adding money to placeholders, but that, that was what he told.
Yeah, so. Let me turn to Commissioner Wright, and then I'll return to Commissioner Davenport.
Yeah, I'm supportive of this moving forward, and Mayor, I hope that you will consider the property committee members when you get on the committee because of the studying that we've done. And I believe that also, I didn't catch all those titles to go with Andrew Saunders, Commissioner Thornton did, but at one of his points in our committee, he had said that being able to put an RFP out to get a real estate agent for us to move on our surplus property, such as the cooperative extension on Broad, I think it's been three years that that's been surplus, is a step in itself, but yet this is also an avenue. So, this could happen faster, and then we would be able to, be able to sell some of our property as we, as a recommendation, and then as us being approved, and then that money would be designated to come in for areas that we have, have as a priority. So, that's, it's not just the money, the properties we have, but it's other. So, that's, it's not just the money, the properties we have, but it's other opportunities as listed in those bullets, and certainly committee, GOC members need to be on there and also others that haven't studied it as much. But I look forward to this commissioner committee getting a lot of work done.
Commissioner Davenport.
I'm ready to vote. Hard question.
Yeah, substitute.
Well, yeah, yeah, so we would begin with substitute. All right, so we'll do a roll call, beginning with the substitute motion from Commissioner Thornton.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
No.
Taylor?
No.
I'm sorry.
You okay?
Right?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Five yes, five no.
All right, I'll vote no, and we'll return to the original motion.
Oh, yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
All right, motion carries. Are we going to move on to item 31? This is the North Avenue, North Athens, excuse me, transportation improvements, and I'd entertain a motion from the body.
So move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. Is there a second?
I'm going to second it with an amendment. Is, so should I just do a sec? Let me tell you what I want to do, okay?
This is a raise grant. This is the.
Oh, no, we're not ready for these.
This is the North Athens.
I'm so ready. Okay, well, y'all just vote yes on that one, okay?
I'll second.
Motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Thornton.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, all right.
No discussion.
Commissioner Hamby, any discussion?
No, sir.
Commissioner Thornton?
No discussion.
Any from members of the body? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. 32 is item SPOS 2011, Project 22. Of course, as everybody in the room knows, there had been a nonprofit that we were going to partner with on this project, and they've now declined to continue to pursue that project. And so, we have somewhere in the ballpark of $3 million, potentially more, if we gather some other unused SPOS 2011 funds that are going to have to land somewhere for used development. And so, I'd entertain a motion, the staff has provided several options.
I want to move to put this on hold.
I'll second.
Yeah, and I.
Motion from Commissioner Link to hold.
Yeah, well, primarily because if you move forward to item 38, we have a, an application for congressionally-directed spending that, for Howard Park. And 32 here, or was it 34? No. It's, the staff recommendation is for this money to go to Howard Park to complete the master plan that never got completed back in, what, 2005 or something?
On 32, no.
On 32, 32, yeah. So, I just recommend that we just put 32 on hold till we find out what the deal is with this potential grant money that might cover that project.
And that's on hold till the next voting cycle?
Well, I'd like to ask staff, what is the ETA to find out about a grant like that?
I'm not exactly sure on this one.
What I can say, kind of having been involved in some of these other congressionally-directed spending items in the past, is that generally the federal government approves a fiscal year budget, and their fiscal year begins in October, so probably sometime prior to October.
So, in the next couple of months, we could find out if that.
If Congress was operating under.
Well, yeah, that's.
Traditional procedures.
Yeah, and I think that's the answer we just got to, given the environment and the climate. There is an application deadline, which is what we're seeking to apply for, but in terms of timing on any kind of response or answer, we don't have one.
Well, there's another reason I'd like to put this on hold. There are some expectations in the Rock Springs community that that park would be completed, that facility, that indoor basketball facility, that could also serve multiple purposes as a community center, and it hasn't been. And there were expectations that the, this funding, this particular funding would go to a facility in the West Broad neighborhood that would possibly fulfill those needs since the Howard Park wasn't getting finished. And now that's no longer happening. So, regardless, I feel like there needs to be some conversation in that community, you know, whether or not this money might end up there, or if it's going to end up going somewhere else, folks need to know why. But more than anything, I think we need to wait on this other grant to find out, you know, if this funding is even available, or, you know, if this project is funded by another source, we don't even have to have this discussion.
All right, I've got Commissioner Wright as the second, and then I have Commissioner Thornton, Fisher, and Davenport.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think when looking at the history on item 32, you can see that we ran out of funding in 2005 for completing what was planned. The 2011 money is not enough to complete. It has to be piggybacked with something else, which is why we were teaming up and hoping to team up land that didn't come through. And so, I'm not supportive of starting something new because the youth that this is supposed to be helping will be no longer youth by the time we get this moving. If we don't try to complete something that's already been done, or team up with getting the funding done with the current 2011 Project 22. So, I think I really missed that 38. I mean, this is a long agenda, so I think all of us seeing at number 38, I hope, can support putting this on hold so that we can discuss it all in a more comprehensive way.
Commissioner Thornton.
I am, I have no problem putting it on hold, but we did hear some information tonight that we were not privy to ahead of time. And I would like a, I would like, I don't want to make a substitute motion, but if I have to, I will. I do think we need to discuss recreation facilities in West Athens. If we don't hear nothing before October, we should be at least talking about the west side of town. So, I would like on the agenda for, and I know that Mr. Green mentioned my side of town also, which is the north side, and I'm good with that, but the west side right now is growing in leaps and bounds. And if we don't start planning for infrastructure, recreation, we're still going to be at a hole. So, I would like to make a motion that we at least talk about the west side of Athens recreation centers, center program in August. Is that a substitute motion do I need to make?
So, if it was on hold, we would know that the next time we'll have that, we'll basically have the same discussion that we could have this evening, and, you know.
But if this, say that again.
Let me be clear. Like you, I'm a very strong proponent for landing all this money on the west side of Athens, given the growth. But a hold would certainly give us that time to coalesce around an approach and hopefully to find out what's going on with congressionally-directed funds also.
Okay.
I've got Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, and I sort of want to follow up on Commissioner Thornton's point. From a historical perspective, we had given this money to land trusts initially. They had these dollars, and they was going to do something on the west side. So, I would like for us to continue that approach on the west side and possibly look at, you know, a private partner to go in and get this thing done, you know? It takes us as a government forever to do projects. You know, we're talking 2011. These things should have been done. Now, we're going to get congressional money, that's all well said and done, and I can go with a hold, but to everybody's point, we just approved a 900 multi, single-family community. Of course, going to be a lot of kids in that community, hopefully. So, it makes sense for somewhere, and again, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Johnson though, that's our district, but we need to make sure wherever we plan to put this community center, that it's going to be used, and we know we don't have anything on the west side. And they gave us the money back from Land Bank, so what the purpose of doing something on the west side? I don't want us to change gears and all of a sudden go do Howard Park when we were already talking about doing this project on the west side. And I don't even know what the SPOS, what was the reading in the SPOS project? Did it specifically say for the west side at that particular time?
The 2011 funds could have been spent anywhere.
Okay, okay.
But we were working in the Hancock Corridor and looking at properties there.
Okay, okay, so that's my point, so.
Commissioner Davenport, then Commissioner Johnson.
Good solution for Commissioner Thornton and Fisher. If we go ahead.
I think we have something good.
That's something good, hopefully it's good. I'm going to try. So, it's highly unlikely they're going to get funds, but, you know, we'll see. But we're sitting on $3 million right now. If we go ahead tonight and approve option number two, Mayor Commission, approve option number two to use the T-SPOS 2011 Project 22 funds to supplement the T-SPOS Project 14 funds for the purchase of land and building of a youth and community enrichment facility ba-ba-ba-ba on the west side of Athens and Johnson with a new Athens West Park.
I've got Commissioner Johnson, then I'll turn to Commissioner Hamby.
Was that a motion?
Yes, that's a substitute motion.
A second.
All right.
Thank you. A second.
Commissioner Davenport.
And third.
Substitute motion to select item two, which is on the second page of the agenda report. So, and I've got a second from Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, I'll turn to you.
So, I grew up in six different neighborhoods in District 6. It is not lost on me that there is no indoor-outdoor space for families to enjoy each other being families. I, everyone in District 6 and the surrounding areas have to drive into town to have that type of experience. If you have something, you have more than the residents of District 6 have. It is long overdue. I don't, I want to remind you that in December and in November, there were 800 homes, three different developments that were approved for a total of 800 homes. We have the 925 homes for this project, and then with the mall redevelopment project of 1,201, let's just say each house has a half a kid. We need to start now. I know this is my top three of priorities for District 6 is to get the conversation and the plan started for a indoor-outdoor space for our community, and add on and grow with it. But we need lanes, trails, bikes, we need all of those things that kids enjoy. We need picnics, picnic tables. I envision Bishop Park, but I told, we will never have enough money to do another Bishop Park, which is fine. I just, a scale of that where families can go, go out of their home and be a family together in the elements of our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamby, then Commissioner Thornton.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I don't disagree with what has been said, but I'm just wondering, you know, the motion, main motion was to put it on hold. We're not going to go out and spend $3 million by the time Mr. Senator Alsop gets back to us on whether or not he can give us the money or not for this, so.
We already have one substitute motion.
We already, do we have one?
Yeah, we've got a main motion, now there's a substitute motion on the floor to direct all the funds, unite them two.
So, I'm just saying, let's see what happens. I mean, it only makes sense to see what happens in the bigger picture of things, of what's going on with Howard Park. And, you know, I get that we want to do something on the west side part, but we've got $1 million in SPOS dollars right there right now that could go towards identifying and possibly buying some property. I don't imagine, I mean, undeveloped property out there, I don't know what is going forward per acre just yet, but I could find out. But certainly $1 million can help us put a down payment on something, and then that way, you know, as Commissioner Wright pointed out with Howard Park now, I remember Commissioner Maxwell talking about that basketball court and how it needs to be built. And you remember that? And we cut it short, I wasn't on the commission then, but they cut it short then, so we need to make it right now.
Commissioner Thornton.
I cannot believe that I'm advocating so hard for the west side because the north side don't have recreation, but the north side is working on transportation, infrastructure, and we're organizing and we're getting things done. But I will say this, if we don't do it, it's not going to get done. You know, let's just do like we do everything else. This is a community that has spoken up. Pat, Commissioner Davenport did exactly what he said, he's going to make me happy, and I think we should go with it. And if Alsop comes up with something for the Howard, we'll do Howard too. But the north side and the west side on the perimeters, and I know you're going to say the same thing about the east side, I'm sorry, have told, I don't know where your money been spent, but it sure hasn't been spent in our districts, okay? So, I'm going to support this if that's your motion, and go from there. And I want to bring up something else, one no.
Go ahead.
Anyone else before we move to the vote on the substitute motion? All right, the substitute motion is that the Mayor Commission approve option two to use SPOS 2011 Project 22 funds to supplement the SPOS 2020 Project 14 funds for the purchase of land and building of a youth and community enrichment facility on the west side of Athens in conjunction with the new Athens West Park. So, we'll begin with a roll call with Commissioner Davenport.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
We're on the substitute motion.
Link?
Sorry, we were, got distracted.
No. Taylor?
This is on.
Substitute motion.
West side.
You don't like the west side, go on.
I do, I love the west side.
Wright?
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Wright?
Wright.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a no.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
No.
Seven yes, three no.
All right, motion carries. All right, westsiders, y'all are going to see some park action, all right? All right, moving on, item 33. 33 is approval of Athens Clark County Strategic Plan. Do I hear a motion?
I have a substitute motion.
Three, 33.
Item 33.
Yes, I just, it says, my motion is to have the plan FY 26 to 27 instead of 28. We do a lot of changes throughout the year on the strategic plan, so I just think that it should be reflected in our records that it is 26. So, I'm talking about annually instead of every two years.
So, this would be every two instead of every three under your motion?
Yeah, yeah. Y'all be whispering over there, pay attention.
Sorry, we snapped on.
Commissioner Davenport?
She'd need a second first.
She would need a second first.
I'm sorry. Can you say the motion? I'm sorry, I apologize.
Commissioner Thornton made a motion to have a two-year strategic plan rather than a three-year strategic plan. So, same words, but.
Nothing changes.
Two-year horizon rather than a three-year horizon.
I second that.
All right, so we've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Fisher, any follow-up?
No.
Commissioner Davenport?
So, motion to adopt as strategic plan as is.
Yes. The plan as is, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Is that a substitute motion?
Yes, substitute motion to staff recommendation. So, it'll be a three-year plan.
What did she say?
Two.
Second.
So, Commissioner Davenport is making a substitute motion to adopt the agenda item as exists.
Yeah.
A three-year plan rather than a two-year plan. Is there a second for the substitute?
A second.
All right, so, it's Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, we worked on this extensively for three-year plan. There were, you know, we did have some feedback from commissioners about some of the strategic planning definitions like healthy, livable, sustainable, you know, and that. But we went to Greenville, we talked about it in retreats, you know, we instituted a three-year plan like five, six years ago, and this is just a follow-up. And these strategic plans help guide staff and, you know, to have something to focus on, and. on, and I would just hate for us to do a three-year plan and then reduce it to two years. But I get it, I get it though, but we worked on it so hard and just at the last minute to change it to two-year.
I, I'm gonna circle back around, Commissioner Wright was the second on the substitute motion.
Yeah, I, I, the reason I seconded it was because I also believe that we've been talking about it in those, the chunk of the three years, and I think that it took compress a timeline like that without updating the content and the, it's, it's like, it sounds like more work in less time.
Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Thornton.
Yeah, in, in the substitute motion to change it from twenty-sixth to twenty-seven, perhaps someone could put forth when we would be working on the next one. What I'm thinking is in, in, in January twenty-seven, yes, January twenty-seven, we have, have either five people here will be sworn back in, or there'll be five more people and a new mayor. So, does this, if it's, it would make sense then to, in that following year, to be working on an update to the strategic plan because we would have significant change, at least at the, at the helm, right? So, but I'm not sure in these numbers when that would lead to us working on the strategic plan. That would be twenty-seven. Would we, I would, I, I'd want us to, whatever it is, I'd want us to be waiting until that all those new people are in office to be working on the strategic plan.
So, so, just in, in terms of kind of replication of what we've done already, so, we worked on this proposed plan in calendar twenty-four and calendar twenty-five.
Right.
Then the commissioners.
And, and it's the plan for fiscal twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth, so, you know, you could imagine that a plan that was worked on in calendar twenty-seven would be for fiscal twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Right, so for, for that purpose, I would vote against shortening it. I would just keep it as it is, so the next time we're doing this is when we have new...
That's the motion on the floor.
Yeah. So, is that?
Commissioner Fisher hasn't spoken, then I'll get Commissioner Taylor and Thornton.
Um, one reason I support shortening it because we are getting ready to hire a county manager, and I think they need to be a part of it. So, I think with the two years and to Commissioner Myers' point, this commission gonna be changed in twenty-twenty-seven, so that commission should have the opportunity and along with who our county manager is to stick the strategic plan going forward over the next several years. So, to me, two-year was short. Now, granted, if you do have a three-year, that don't mean it's cutting stone, you can always change it, I get that piece, but I think we should give those commissioners, new mayor, and that county manager the opportunity to stick the strategic plan moving forward. So, that's, that's why I would support a shorter time, so.
Commissioner Thornton and then Commissioner Davenport.
Um, I think Commissioner Fisher echoed or said what I, he probably said it much better than, than, than me. We had, we had one, two, three, four, four new commissioners come on, and they really did not have ground input in a plan that was already there for them. I was just trying, I'm not trying to change it. The plan may look exactly the way it is, but when new commissioners come on, they, they shouldn't have to be tied to what a past commissioner did, that's what. And I do, I hadn't thought about the county manager. I think the county manager's choice, bringing on, we need to give some room for some input if we're going, if we're gonna change the way we've done stuff, have done things in the past. And I am, you know, it really, it really is overwhelming for me when we say, this is the way we always did it, or we've always done it this way, and, and then you don't even have good results from what you've always done, all the time. So, I do think that this is the way we always done it, or we've worked, you know, let's give some room for people who come with new ideas and new directions, and kudos to all of us that have been on here for a minute, but I wanna make sure, I would like to make sure that new people, when they come on, they feel that they are engaged and they do not have to, that they really have some, I think Commissioner Taylor said it tonight, she felt like nobody was hearing her. We wanna make sure everybody's heard, not just because we've been on here longer and more, so that was my point. I'm not even talking about changing anything in the plan. I'm not suggesting, this may be the same thing we look at in twenty, you know, twenty-twenty-seven. I'm just saying, let's give people an opportunity to be commissioners that they feel like they got some skin in the game.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, so, the, this way we're doing strategic plan is new, so it's not, it hasn't been over a decade or, it's relative, like, I think five years, four years that we, we, we started. So, my main concern is the compressed time, and we're gonna ask staff to do in three years what they have already mapped out to do, and you see their graph on attachment three, five, or all of them, and now I guess the, the original motion would be to say, okay, well, we're gonna compress it in two years, this is gonna add chaos to staff, and they're just gonna have to work extra hard on top of all the other things that we have to do or they have to do. I just think we started down this road with three years, let's complete it, then after that, let's change it then, because we have some new commissioners come on when we were doing this.
This is not one I'm gonna...
I'm gonna go ahead and...
Okay, let's vote.
I just need to call Commissioner Hamby.
I'm just gonna make a point, you know, y'all, it doesn't matter. Two or, two or three years, we can change this, we can change the strategic plan tomorrow if we want to, so, let's just, let's move on.
Let's do the vote.
All right, so, motion on the floor from Commissioner Davenport is to adopt the FY twenty-sixth to FY twenty-eight plan as presented, and so we'll do a roll call beginning with Commissioner Davenport.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
All right, motion carries. All right, item thirty-four is an intergovernmental agreement with the Athens Downtown Development Authority for the development of Service Park. Do the roll call vote, this is the one that we began with Commissioner Davenport. So, this is for thirty-two to affirm, now that we've read the ordinance.
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
You just changed it.
No, sorry, I forgot.
Yeah.
We're on thirty-two.
Okay, Link?
No, sorry.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
No.
Seven yes, three no.
All right, all right. Everybody remembered how they voted, too. Good job.
I thought that was the tie.
All right, item thirty-four is the intergovernmental agreement with the Athens Downtown Development Authority. Do I hear a motion?
I'm ready.
I'm, I'm gonna move that we put this on hold, just 'cause I'm hearing from my colleagues that they have not had the opportunity to process the information, they feel like there's not been a whole lot of transparency. I am excited about this project, I, but I've been privy to a lot of information since it is in my district.
So, can we hold to the first Tuesday in August, given that's our next voting opportunity, voting opportunity?
That's fine.
Second.
Yeah.
That's fine. Sixty days.
I'll say that's...
That's fine.
All right, so, motion from Commissioner Link to hold until first Tuesday of August, second from Commissioner Hamby.
All in favor?
Ask a question first. Well, you'll have an opportunity, but Commissioner Hamby is second or has an opportunity?
No, I was just saying, let's vote, so. But if, John, somebody has a question.
Commissioner Culpepper?
How is this gonna affect the sewer capacity for downtown if we hold it?
So, Andrew Griffin, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
If we hold it, we've still got another second Oconee project going closer to East Broad Street that will still continue to move on, which we're anticipating opens up a significant amount of sewer upon its completion. It may slow down slightly this one, that would pick up primarily the sewer for the large project that is tied to this. It's our understanding that...
But it's important to note that...
That is true, and we could serve this project with that line, but if we do, we won't have the capacity. We need to serve the east side of downtown, specifically the area around the arena, that development, so we need both of these lines, you know. I will say as far as the north downtown Athens development project, we do know there's a solution there with, with raising the manholes, you know, so, in fact, they've already issued sewer capacity there with those conditions, so, I just didn't want there to be a mistake, I didn't want there, it's important that we have both these lines, because if this project uses, we need both lines, just...
And then, of course, you know, we really have two agenda items, thirty-five more specifically pertains to the sewer, but obviously the two are interconnected.
This project needs the sewer line that's associated with this project to be upgraded. You're right.
Because it uses that project's sewer capacity.
Right, then it takes it away from others. That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, could I change my motion to hold it till our July, was it July fifteenth agenda session?
July fifteenth is the agenda setting meeting.
That would, I feel like that gives us a month and a week to have the conversations that need to happen, but I, I know that there is some timeliness.
Commissioner Hamby, you, you okay with that modification?
I think I will be, but I, I do believe Representative From might could shed some light on, on the timeline for us. Mr. Williams, do you have a, can you do that, or?
Mr. Williams will be able to maintain approximately the same timeline if we have a vote, July fifteenth?
Actually, probably not, you know, it's not a, we're not in a month-for-month kinda delay situation here. I mean, this is a student multi-family development, at the end of the day, has to be delivered on a certain timeline in August of every year. So, right now, our client is pushing as hard as they can go for a delivery in twenty-twenty-seven for this, which means the sewer has to get done faster, and pretty much any delay past, I think you guys have another meeting in June, on June the tenth, maybe, or something like that. Pretty much any delay past that, that causes it to go into, it's gonna slow the project down probably materially because they have a whole nother year to complete the development. And the attorney is correct, we do have a solution to fix the second phase of Bethel Homes by raising the manholes, but that won't fix the third. So, you know, Bethel can't go the other way, I don't believe, to get out, and he's right, we desperately need to fix both the issues in downtown. So, I would ask that if you are gonna hold it or gonna delay it, please consider delaying it until June the tenth, and, and we will be, we will make ourselves available, we will make the developer available, we will sit down with you at any time, give you any information you want, and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that you don't feel fully informed about this, but if you could consider at least backing it up to the tenth, I think we can still stay on track for the delivery, which will ultimately expedite the sewer line and, and the build of that sewer line, so.
I'll change my motion to the tenth.
All right, so, motion from Commissioner Link is to hold until June tenth. You're the second, or Commissioner Hamby?
For the third time, I'll change my motion to, to second.
All right, so, motion from Commissioner Link is to hold to June tenth, there's a second from Commissioner Hamby. Thank you, Mr. Williams, we'll leave you know if we have any more questions. Other questions or input from the body?
Yeah, well, I mean...
Commissioner Myers?
Before we vote on this, right? I mean, we're talking about a, a week delay here, you know, my concerns, which I've shared with individuals and we've, as a group, are about not only the process and not being involved here, but also have the community not being involved in terms of making this trade, which clearly many of my colleagues here think it's the best, you know, the best situation for us, but it hasn't been a public discussion of the westward expansion of student housing in that area. I urge anyone in the community who's concerned about that to please bring it forth so that we get some more community input, or if you think it's wonderful, come and tell us, tell us that. Likewise, there is a, you know, there's also a, a financial responsibility here that we're having with this parking that would make us liable for up to five hundred thousand, I think, you know, a year on this, so these are financial decisions that we're making as well here, and so, I feel like I understand the basics here. My concern is that I have not heard from the public, and, you know, maybe there isn't anyone in the public who, who cares, and maybe that's the case, and I'm not sure if one week we'll be able to figure that out or not, but I'm gonna make that plea from my side to get some more input from the community, if anyone out there is listening and wants to look into this, please come and talk to us or email us about this as well. Thank you.
I think I'll send the commission.
My sentiments also, I think, most of my colleagues know how I feel about this, and again, it's probably because it got, so, months ago, if we have the commission have been informed, and that wasn't the case. Same thing with the public, they hadn't been informed. It is a great project, I, I like the fact that it's gonna be sewed and do phases three and four, and also connect to the Classic Center, but we have an obligation to this community, and again, and I'm gonna say what I said, are we in the student housing business? Or we in the business of supporting this community with housing? I understand the developer can build housing there, and that's great. I love UGA students, hell, I spent thirty-two years there, so I understand that, but when we don't be transparent with each other and with our community, that calls concern, and I'm, and I'm, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I'm not sure what way I'm gonna go on this thing, and I appreciate it's gonna be a good benefit for our community, but we need to be realistic about how we handle our business, and that's the problem I got, so, I'll leave it at that.
All right, Commissioner Link, can you follow?
Yeah, I just, um, I just wanna state the benefit, I mean, I am not a fan of student housing, y'all know I got into politics because I was...
Can you state them on June tenth?
Yeah, can you state them on June the tenth?
Um, I'll save it, but there are a lot of benefits to this, and I, I encourage folks to let, reach out to me if they have any concerns, I mean, handful, I, I, I'm surprised I've not heard from anybody, quite frankly.
Because no one knew about it.
I mean, it's hit the paper, it's, it's hit, it's hit the paper, and...
All right, motion and second are to hold to June tenth, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Taylor, opposed to hold.
All right. So, moving forward, we should know that Commissioner Taylor is against this project, and Commissioner Taylor is gonna do her due diligence to get as many constituents as I can to come to City Hall to speak out against it as well.
All right, moving on to item thirty-five, that's the memorandum of understanding with CS Acquisition Ventures to expedite sewer improvements at the North Coney River Crossing Phase One.
So, move.
Second.
All right, motion from Commissioner Hamby, and second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Hamby, any follow-up?
Nope.
Commissioner Wright? Others? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I, I don't agree.
Note, note opposition from Commissioner Taylor. All right, item thirty-six is the twenty-twenty-five update, update to the collective bargaining agreement between the unified government and the professional firefighters of Athens Clark County, IAF Local Twenty-seven ninety-five. So, move.
So, move.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, and I've got a second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Hamby?
Nope, just appreciate what the firefighters are doing, and appreciate what, what, what has become of this, and look forward to good, continued relationship.
Commissioner Thornton?
Ditto.
Any others? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Item thirty-seven is request to rename the Linden House Art Center South Gallery after Nancy Lukasiewicz, longtime employee. This, this is just public notice, and so, just know that this is in front of the public now, and will be voted on in the July-August cycle.
Thank you.
All right, thirty-eight is the aforementioned application to Senator Alsop for congressionally directed spending for Howard Park completion and a pop-up park outreach vehicle.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion from Commissioner Link, and second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Link, any remarks?
Nope, let him apply, we'll find out.
Commissioner Wright?
Ready to vote.
Any others? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, motion carries. Item thirty-nine is the North Avenue Quarter Raise Grant Project and consideration of grant options. So, would somebody like to place a motion on the floor for an option?
I am going to make the motion for option number one, recommended by staff with some recommendations. And I would like for the mayor to appoint six members as advisory to work with the consultants and staff on the planning and design process. And I'm requesting that the committee should be made up of two members of District Two and District Nine and District Two members at large.
Just for clarity, that would be on, once we find out if we're going to be approved to convert the grant to a planning grant, at that point is when she's requesting.
All right. So, motion on the floor is to pursue option one with a six-member resident committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Got a second from Commissioner Link. All right. Commissioner Thornton, any further remarks?
No, I do want to take the moment. I know Mike is gonna let me do this. I do want to thank the members of District Nine. I know they're watching. I told them it'd be kind of late for hanging in here with this. And I also want to thank the people that have been encouraging. But one thing I do want, want to mention that I understand, and I didn't hear it myself, but we've had people that have had some misinformation about the Raise Grant and losing that grant. And I want to bring to those folk in our media and associates a memo that was sent out on June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-third, the third page, a small paragraph that says if ACC is not able to encumber, will not be able to encumber by September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, ACC Gov. would lose two-hundred-and-twenty-two, twenty twenty-two Raise Grant. So, there is a misunderstanding that we changed the CDO and that we're forcing the, or putting us in jeopardy of losing the grant. And I just want to, I know I'm talking fast, but I want Brad or somebody of staff to state it clearly that our CDO did not jeopardize the C, the Raise Grant. This was something that was in place. It was an issue in twenty twenty-three, but it never came before this commission for a discuss. So, I'm turning it over to you, Brad.
Okay. Yes, there was, there was a memo sent from Manager Williams in twenty twenty-three that outlined a lot of the issues with it, the timing, the deadlines on it, and he did, you know, the, the discussion that potentially is in the community that it was only the CDO that put this at jeopardy. We knew a year before that that we were in trouble with our timelines, and that that was the purpose of Manager Williams' notice of proposed administrative action was requesting to change the scope of it to try to still hit those deadlines. So, it was not simply a product of the CDO that created this problem.
All right. We've got a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there an ordinance?
There was an ordinance.
Thirty-eight. Y'all hit, y'all hit the Turbo button.
Yeah, yeah.
I dropped them all. Goodness.
It's like.
Y'all went from a, I was still thinking about thirty-five, thirty-eight. So, if you could put on it real quick.
He's probably still thinking about forty-three.
Yeah, that's true. I'm thinking about a lot of things. In ordinance to amend the FY two thousand twenty-five operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so it's provide grant funding if awarded from congressionally-directed spending for expenses related to Howard Park improvements and outreach vehicle replacement and for other purposes.
All right. That's affirm our unanimous decision. All in favor of thirty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, motion carries. And you said no ordinance with thirty-nine. Correct.
No. The next ordinance is, there are no more ordinances.
Forty is a request to hold, and this is a change that was precipitated by the way that the state compensates, compensates superior court judges. Now, a motion to hold until next Tuesday?
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Fisher to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a second from Commissioner Hamby. Any remarks?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Forty-one is title only. Of course, we have a budget work session two days from today in this room. I will not be here. I will be at a high school graduation, but y'all can continue the conversation that we've had at prior meetings. All right. Forty-three, which we're gonna have to split into two pieces, is new business, so I need a motion for suspension of rules.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Taylor for suspension of rules. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Hearing none, motion carries. All right. First is Part A. These are nominations for charter officers, personnel hearing officer, and acting charter officers for June third. So, we're gonna begin with nominations for charter officers. So, make the nomination for Judge Drake for county attorney and for Gavin Hasimer for the internal office auditor, excuse me. The term of these charter officers would begin July first, twenty twenty-three. I request that you approve these nominations and authorize me to execute renewals of the employment agreements for the county attorney and internal auditor, subject to each officer being required to sign their employment agreement to confirm acceptance of their employment. I also nominate Bill Berryman to continue to serve as the personnel hearing officer for the Unified Government and request that you approve this nomination. Can I please have a motion for these nominations?
So moved.
All right. Got a nomination from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Wright, any remarks?
I don't remember. It's happened a nomination part before we voted. Is it, do we also?
Standard, just every two years, so.
No wonder I forget. We have that gap. Anyway, I'm excited about working with you gentlemen again and hope to not see the hearing officer.
Commissioner Fisher?
Ditto. Commissioner Wright's comment. Thank you all for what you all do for all sets commissioners and for the employees of Athens Clark County Government. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
No.
Is there an ordinance associated with this, or is this just a?
Just a motion.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, motion carries. All right. We've got forty-three B. I make the following nominations for acting charter officers because Brad Griffin, sitting in front of us for this last many months, has exhausted all of his available hours as a temporary employee. And he, let it be known, is on the hook in this position until eight AM tomorrow morning. And so, just want to make sure that everybody knows that up until seven fifty-nine and fifty-nine seconds, you can call that man because he's being compensated for that time. But at this time, I would like to make the following nominations for acting charter officers, for acting manager Judge Drake, and for acting county attorney for John Hawkins. The term of these acting charter officers will begin effective Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at eight oh one AM through and including Friday, August first, twenty twenty-five, at five PM or until a new manager is appointed, whichever event occurs first. I request that you approve these nominations and authorize me to execute the employment agreements for acting manager and acting county attorney, subject to each appointee being required to sign their employment agreement to confirm acceptance of their appointment. Can I please get a nomination, a second to approve these?
I so moved.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton and a second from Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner Thornton, any remarks?
Much surprise you. No remarks. The remarks will come when you start.
You're changing your cell phone number for this role, Attorney Drake?
No, no. I enjoy talking to each one of you.
Commissioner Davenport?
Thank you all.
All right. Any further? All in favor, please say aye.
Bradley, thank you.
Any, any opposed? Brad, thank you so much. Round of applause for Brad.
Woo!
Learned, learned to steer this ship in quick order. Appreciate it a great deal. Okay. Now, my friends, is the time that we always have for public input by members of the public regarding any item that was not on tonight's agenda. Rules of public input here are substantially the same as prior three-minute opportunity. Good evening.
Yes, I'm Michael McClendon, Princeton Mill. I appreciate the hour. I thank you for your good work tonight. Just want to hit three quick things. Brad, thank you very much as a citizen. Appreciate your professionalism, your dedication to serving Athens Clark County. We're gonna miss you, but we hope we see you around town. The second point is to kind of support Commissioner Link. You know, just because an article comes out in the flagpole about, you know, this, what started out as a parking garage is now this huge project is not sufficient public notice. The public doesn't really know about this. There's been no engagement by Athens Clark County directly with the public. So, I encourage you to hold some hearings, really advertise this. There are a lot of significant issues here that have to be addressed. The third thing is, I wanted to talk to you about this issue on one April, but the hour was long. It had a lot of issues. Didn't have time. Wanted to do it the following month, but I had an emergency, so I couldn't stay. But what I want to talk to you briefly about is, I think we all agree that integrity in government and transparency are critically important. I think we agree on that. The reason I wanted to do this publicly is, over the last two years, I have sent you numbers of letters and emails documenting issues that have to do with conflict of interest and other issues that have to do with behavior and violations of Chapter Three of the Charter of Athens Clark County that relate to ethics. I've never received a response. So, tonight, I'm formally submitting, so the public can see, a documented letter, which I'll give to Attorney Drake here with a package for each one of you. And I won't go into all of that letter, but the bottom line is that there are a lot of violations that are going on that you're not taking seriously. And the more I looked into it and have gone through the Personnel Manual and the Charter, it's really interesting how you're held to a lower standard of conduct than employees are in Athens Clark County. And the public is given more access and responsiveness if I file a complaint against an employee of Athens Clark County than if someone files a complaint against an elected official, which I find that inequity just to be incomprehensible. So, I did an in-depth review of your Personnel Manual and the Ethics Charter that you currently have against current evidence-based practices in government and also the Georgia Municipal Association's Model Code. You're very delinquent. And I understand that because it was cobbled together when the Unified Government Charter was created in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one, and it's never been updated. In fact, the only time that the Charter has been reviewed, it was very narrowly reviewed, and most of the sections were never looked at. So, I have gone through and I've provided you an updated Chapter Three with all the terms and conditions and everything else, and it's based on the Georgia Municipal Association Charter Model Document.
Thank you, Mr. McClendon. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. I appreciate those of you who are staying. My reason for being here is pretty similar to that gentleman's. Again, I came here because of the unanimous approval of the Dekalil Lake Project, sometimes called Lakeshore, sometimes called the Shoals, that would destroy over a hundred and fifty acres of beautiful forest without notice to the community and without comment from the community that would be most impacted. I, in fact, live facing those woods. I walk in those woods every single day. They are privately owned, but that owner has allowed our community to use those woods as long as we don't take fish out of the lake and as long as we maintain the woods, which we have. And this project has been approved again without notice to the community, without us being able to have any input. And so, I think that I would like to propose that there is a change in how approvals for clearcutting of our woods, our green spaces, the very things that determine our health outcomes, our property taxes, that those are dealt with a lot differently, that the commission doesn't just go by zoning. I was told that we weren't notified of this clearcutting because of the way the woods were already zoned. But that is a drastic change to the community that we weren't informed about, and we did not get to have the same kind of input that WNA Engineering has had with you guys one-on-one in several meetings. I found out through a flagpole article, similar to the Jackson parking situation. I found out more about that here tonight. So, there does need to be a way for community members, especially those of us who are working class. I got to come out here at six o'clock. It is nine, just like you guys have had to be here for a long time. Most working-class people cannot do that. But there is no requirement for there to be town halls. I have never gotten to speak to Davenport as much as I've gotten to speak to Taylor. Davenport is my commissioner. Taylor is someone who is, chooses to be active in the community. Myers chooses to send letters, but I, because there is no directive, we don't have that from every single commissioner. And so, I'd like us to really reconsider how zoning is done, how these sprawling new suburbs are approved, because we are not doing mixed density. We're doing suburban sprawl with this project. We're turning a highly rural area into a suburban sprawl where the working-class, black and brown people will now have to worry about a lot of class and racial tension.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Serena Samast. I'm here on the behalf of the Muslim community of Alfredo. I don't know if you guys been there. In the past couple of months or in recent history, there's been a lot of racial discrimination and hate around not just Athens, not just Atlanta, not just Alfredo, but across Georgia. It's not just direct Muslims, but multiple other minorities as well. In our most sacred places, we don't feel safe. In our streets, we don't feel safe. In our homes, we don't feel safe. A lot of community, a lot of committee members here today are minorities, and I know you felt this fear and this hatred before. Today, we came here to ask to sponsor the message you already, that you guys have already gave before. You guys have already advocated for safety rights. You already advocated for minority rights. We just ask to support this movement again and again. We believe that this helps both parties. It helps us gain the security that we have asked for, not just for months, not for years, but decades, and it helps highlight what you've done before, this time on a bigger scale. This movement isn't something that just came up. It isn't something new. It's been talked about for multiple years. There's half a million Muslims in Georgia who are willing to back this movement. The support is there. It's gonna be ginormous. The donations are there. It's gonna be ginormous. There's a lot of attention on this movement. All we ask for is a small step to start this movement. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jamaica Miller, and I'm at fifteen forty Morton Road, and I would like to speak on about House Bill thirty-four seventeen, which is dealing with website and accessibility to make our website and apps accessible for the disability community. We have, we've found out that ninety-five, ninety-five percent of the websites are not accessible for, for disability, for the disability community. So, I'd like to ask that you pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamaica. I appreciate you coming tonight.
Good evening. Dylan Woolsey, five zero five Bourbon Parkway. I just have a few comments. Forgot what agenda item it was, but one of the developers was talking about how because there is a certain lease supply on the east side, I think more like southeast side of Athens, that they've had to lower their rate, lower their rents. This is a positive that I think we all possibly overlooked, that what we want is to make more rents, more housing, more affordable, is we want rents to be lowered. And this is just an example of. And this is just an example of, if there is enough supply, sometimes rents can actually lower or not increase as much. As well, on the topic of housing, I know in the next coming months, I believe, the future land use map is going to be considered. Going to a public meeting on this, they said that the proposed changes will allow for the 30,000 new residents, will accommodate the 30,000 new residents planned to come here. However, it is, even if it keeps track with those 30,000 residents, housing now will be unaffordable, and if it just at the same pace, housing then will also be unaffordable. So I hope you consider that 30,000 additional possible units or possible changes in terms of accommodating residents as a baseline and possibly consider allowing and encouraging more multifamily, more mixed-use, more dense housing to actually possibly lower rents and possibly increase our workforce and affordable housing supply, as well as, we saw from the recent presentation, increase our tax revenue so we can spend on more low-income housing assistance and public services and addressing our inequities geographically, racially, in many parts of our community. And finally, I'm talking to some public safety officials. A lot of what their time is used for is for dealing with drug use, homelessness, and mental health. And so I think in terms of, we heard near towards the beginning of the meeting today about how we need to really prioritize our officers' time, one of the best ways to do that would be to fully fund our alternative, I forgot what it's called, sorry, our alternative response to it. Thank you. Fully funding that, making sure that they're as well-staffed as they can be to take these calls, because as I'm talking with the, I talked to Emily from the Fire Department, they say often a lot of their calls is dealing with these issues, and that's not a good use of their time. So fully funding these will actually help make our police department, law enforcement, our public safety officials use their time as efficiently as we can, improving public safety for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Good evening.
Good evening. Jared York, I live at Woodlawn Avenue. I'd like to thank Brad. You've been awesome. So really appreciate everything that you've done and all the help you've given the homebuilding and the community over the years. So I would also like to thank those of you who have spoken to me and given me opportunities to have your time over the last few months as we tried to get the Cedar Ridge Development approved. Have a few things I'd like to say about that. The American dream is not to rent a two-bedroom apartment from an Atlanta developer. We have a lack of affordable housing, or excuse me, attainable housing in Athens Clark County. You can attribute it to 300 to 500 units and different price points. You just gave that market to D.R. Horton on the west side. Our single-family zones effectively van attainable housing, so we have to ask you guys for help. Again, you guys just gave that to D.R. Horton and Rockland Homes on the west side. You turned down a better development to a local small business owner, even though a majority of you liked the development. I've talked enough to you to know that that is the case. You guys turned it down for political and personal reasons. And if there was any reason that Jared York is not allowed to do a PD in District 1 or District 3, I would have appreciated it knowing it ahead of time, and so would Piedmont Hospital, because perhaps one of those Atlanta developers, or D.R. Horton, or somebody else could have put a deal together there and would have saved us all a whole lot of time and a whole lot of money. As for affordable housing, Clark County is losing it faster than it's being created. I know you guys have mentioned there's funds coming up for affordable housing. The reality is, the funds that have come up recently, you guys have wasted six out of the $10 that those kids were willing to give away. You guys need to do a better job of that. You all know you need to do a better job of that. You need to work with people who know how to build cost-effective housing. You have those resources in your community, and you do not reach out to them. We have tried to reach out to you, maybe not good enough, maybe not early enough in my career, but you guys, to see what Stephanie Johnson did for D.R. Horton and respond to them, and I'm not expecting you guys to hold an open house for me or anything like that, but you guys didn't even talk to us. Okay? And that was wrong. And you know that. So anyway, thank you all, and I appreciate, again, those of you guys who did consider our development.
Thank you, Mr. York.
And I hope I find something to replace it one day.
All right, we're going to move to reports from elected and appointed officials. Appreciate everybody's hard work. We're five and a half hours into public meetings this evening, and we have more again on Thursday and next Tuesday. We don't have a meeting in the morning, Commissioner Fisher, since we don't have a voting meeting until August 8th. Do just have one committee direction. I'd just like to direct the GIC Committee to review our relatively recently approved Affordable Housing Investment Strategy and make recommendations of actions that the mayor and commission can take from their review of that document. Got two Adopt Athens approvals, and I'm going through my lengthy stack of paper, and I do want to thank the Classic City Rotary Club for adopting Sunset Drive between Prince Avenue and King Avenue, and the Five Points Carquettes for adopting the Middle Circle, Cherokee Avenue, and McQuarrie Drive Island. So thank you all for working with Athens Clark County, keep Athens Clark County beautiful on those. Want to turn to the manager, anything tonight?
Just you have purchasing reports from us in your packet, and just quickly wanted to thank all of you guys for your patience with me over the last five months. It has been noted that you took it easy on me, and I hope I was able to do a little good while I was here. Thanks also to, couldn't have done it without Sarah, Andrew, and Elka. I mean, they pulled most of the heavy lifting, told me where to go, what to say, and how to say it. So I will always be appreciative to them.
Really appreciate it, Brad. Thank you for being here very much. Mr. Auditor?
Yeah, just thank you all for the opportunity to continue serving in this role and look forward to the progress ahead. So thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
I thank you for reappointing me as county attorney. I look forward to serving for interim period of time and hope you will show me the same grace that you showed to Brad.
Yes. All right, we'll get input from commissioners. We'll begin with Commissioner Johnson, go around, and we'll have Commissioner Fisher adjourn us.
Okay. I'm ready. First, can we get an update on the status of the negotiations between the Athens Clark County Police Department and the school district sent to us, just what's going on with that and where they are? That's one. Number two, thank you, Judd. I have, as they say, I've blown his phone up over the last couple of weeks, and he's offered a wealth of information, tons of information to help me make decisions and process, so thank you. And also to Mr. Hawkins as well. Brad, you're so brave to come back, and you did so well, and you have so much patience. We will miss you, and I hope you truly enjoy retirement. Congratulations to the Citizens Police Academy's 50th graduating class. They had a ceremony last Saturday. And this weekend, my church is hosting for those recently graduated seniors, a job fair for that next step stage opportunity. So I wanted to invite those out to that. And last, I wanted to throw out an appeal, because I think this is going to be a slow burn of a request, to ask if we could somehow begin getting our agenda packets earlier. We found out during our interviews of the VACs when one individual from the planning commission indicated to us that they received their agenda packets on the Friday before the Thursday meeting. So they have five full business days. That's ideal. I just want to just put out a request and a prayer, and I want you to, I would love for us to think about how to get that done. That's all. Thank you. Happy early Father's Day.
Yeah, first, thank you, Brad. Thank you, Brad, and enjoy. And I thank you also, Judd, for taking on this other role for the next couple of months. I want to thank everyone who came and spoke out tonight for, I think, Mr. McLendon, who's gone. Okay. Anyway, his sake to, you know, tell everyone that this decision about the graduate is there. I'll just repeat, I want people to look into that out there. I want to say that I heard the comment from Jamaica about the website accessibility, and I'll make sure to ask about that as we're moving forward, whether or not that's something that needs to be in the, you know, that's in the work plan for the public information. I'll look into that to make sure. And thank the other members here. I missed the one comment in the beginning about the, it's been a long meeting, but the Muslim Association, and if you could just tell me something later that or send that to me as well. My daughter and her family are all Muslims, so I'm very sensitive to that as well. I finally would just like to reiterate that, yeah, actually, I just want to thank the people on the east side because they actually have done a lot together. So we have an east side neighbors group that gets together for the last couple of years that I meet with. There's an east side connect group, a business group, that I just met with recently. They meet. These are people who I share information about developments and ask their input on, as well as having my newsletter, and those of you, I think someone mentioned it out here, but I try my best to get all the information about all the developments out there in that newsletter. Right now, I have almost 1,000 people on that, and about 500 people open it up and look at it. So if you want to know about developments on the east side, what's coming up down the road, I try my best to get the information out there and post it in all the neighbors, the neighborhood Facebook groups as well. So if anyone is out there, even if they're not in District 8 and would like to get that newsletter, please just send me an email, or you can link it, you can get a sign-up via the biography part of the website. And finally, when you get the, to the GIC Committee working on those things, could you please share when those meetings are with the rest of us, so those of us who are interested can either attend or watch online and keep up with what's going on? Because that seems to be the direction, the response, when I always kept saying, oh, we needed to have something to move forward with, some plan of action, and the mayor seems to be asking the GIC Committee to do that, from my understanding. So do please let us know when those are happening. Thanks so much, and see y'all Wednesday night, right?
Thursday night? All righty. First of all, Jared York, I'm not beholden to you, but to my constituents, and I've overwhelmingly heard from them, and that's, so I don't need to have a meeting with you or discuss anything with you, but thank you for your input. Brad, don't answer the phone. If you, Kelly calls you, don't pick it up. Just enjoy your time, fish, golf, whatever you like to do, but thank you for coming back and helping us out. And Judd Drake, I'll be praying for you. I'm just going to be double-duty, so God bless you. And always, thank you, Gavin. Two more years, and it's going to be lots of fun. Of course, Happy Father's Day to all the awesome fathers out there. In my newsletter, I put for Happy Pride, I got the parade wrong. The parade is at 5:00, and the festivities start at 3:00. So Pride is this Saturday downtown. Of course, Happy Juneteenth, Happy Hot Corner. Hopefully, I'll mention all this, so y'all will participate. These are all community, great community events, and we end the month with Ass Fest. And look forward to seeing y'all finishing this budget Thursday, not next Tuesday.
Thanks, Brad. It's been great to work with you. Some more?
Some more.
And good luck. I'm sure we'll see you around town. And Judd, good luck. And Gavin, thanks, thanks for all you've done. And I just want to wish everyone Happy Pride. I'll see everyone, I guess, on Saturday downtown, and Hot Corner's next weekend, and Ass Fest. It's going to be a busy couple of weeks, but this is what makes Athens Athens. We have our summers to kind of celebrate our community, and it's more important than ever that we do that these days. So y'all, please reach out and take care of one another. Thanks.
Brad, enjoy yourself. Thank you for all of your hard work that you've put into Athens Clark County and everything that you've done to get us this far. I appreciate you as a new elected official. My man, Judd. We locked in, Judd. We locked in. We're going to go great together. Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers. That's all I have.
So, me and Brad, thank you for all your work and all the efforts that you put into this community and this county. I can't thank you enough. Judd, looking forward to working with you as our interim manager. Gavin, again, as always, working with you and all the committee and all our staff. And John Hawkins is going to be our interim attorney. Thank you for taking the mail and running with it. And just, you know, I want the community to know, we are, next week, we'll be interviewing candidates for our county manager, and we got five outstanding individuals that's going to come in, and that's going to be a good thing for us. We've got three weekends of great things going on in this community, and I hope people will come out and support all three of those events that was mentioned earlier from our colleagues. And we're trying to finish up our budget. Like, we'll be meeting on Thursday to have our public come out some more, talk about the budget, but hopefully we'll get this tied down and get it passed on the 10th. And then with that said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, everybody.